Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeda. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wustel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the October 18th, 2023 regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you and we thank you for your great love towards us. We pray for the recent retirees from Hillsborough County. Luz Perozio, who was in Head Start, who's had 17 years of service, and Antoinette Ferragino, 33 years of service in human resources. We are so thankful for their many years of service and we ask you to bless them with a long and healthy life and with many years of love, peace, and joy. We pray for protection over all of our military men and women that are serving in our military and also that are serving in law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders. And we pray for protection for all of Hillsborough County, Florida, and our nation. And we pray for the families of those that have recently been affected by any acts of terrorism and by war. And we ask you to give them a great peace to those families that were affected, a great peace that only you can give. We just thank you for that. And we ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapeda. Today it's our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of six outstanding young people as we present the Board of County Commissioners Youth Excellence and Achievement Awards, also known as the YEA Awards. This is the 13th year of the program, which was created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas such as academics, community service, and the performing arts. I look forward to this ceremony every year because it warms my heart and gives me great hope for the future to see how much these young people have accomplished in such a short time. Before we introduce the honorees, I want to recognize members of the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women. The Commission on the Status of Women does an outstanding job each year selecting the YEA Award winners. It must be a challenge to pick just six winners from all the wonderful nominees, and we appreciate their service. The Commission on the Status of Women Chair Lee Lowry is with us today along with a very special guest. Chair Lowry, would you like to say a few words? And followed by Mr. Tony Salvaggio.
Good morning. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
We're very proud to do this for you all, to vet these, but as you said, Chair Hagan, it's incredibly hard. The pool was incredibly amazing this year, so these six, and all six are with us. They're amazing kids, so thank you so much. I am Lee Lowry. I have the pleasure and honor of being the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women for Hillsborough County. We basically do for the commissioners, we kind of do studies and figure out what's best for the women and children of the county. We've looked at human trafficking, we're right now looking at childcare, and just things that affect the health and well-being of those folks, so that's what we do. So yes, again, thank you. I must say a special thank you to Commissioner Wustel, who is the commissioner who appointed me, so I appreciate that, so I can continue to lead this group. The YEA Awards are amazing, and they're one of the most amazing things we do, but the other amazing thing we do is the Women's Hall of Fame. And that application process is open now, so it's on the county's website. We hope that you'll nominate an amazing woman to join those ranks. And then finally, so yeah, we have these terrific winners, and I know the commissioners are going to talk about you guys, but I want to introduce an amazing person as well, Tony Salvaggio, who for the second year in a row, in addition to the gift cards you kids are going to get in the mail from us, he is donating each of you a laptop. So I'm going to let him speak about that.
I guess they didn't know about this. Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for everything that you guys do with the YEA Awards, and thank you to County Commission for putting together this opportunity for us to just collaborate and to create community. This is community. Community means people hearing about awesome initiatives and then wanting to help out and wanting to see how they can give either the time, their talent, or their treasure. So it is an honor for us to be able to do this with this county that has given me everything. So let us not forget that this place is so amazing, this country is so amazing, because it gives us the freedom and the opportunity to do this. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lowry and Mr. Salvaggio, for everything you do for these deserving young people. All of our six honorees have demonstrated a special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are critical for the next generation of leaders. Too often it's the worst examples of teen behavior that are displayed and get attention on the internet and the news, while young people who excel and do good deeds go unnoticed. Well, in Hillsborough County here, we take a different approach. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of the community through strong leadership and determination and determined action will shape our future. The Board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging their efforts. So today we celebrate the next generation with the YEA Awards. There are three categories: leadership, volunteer or community service, and success despite difficult odds. One award in each category goes to a high school student, and one award is, in each is presented to a student in middle school. Now Commissioner Cameron Sapeda will present the first two awards. Commissioner, you're recognized.
The YEA Award recipients in the leadership category demonstrate positive impact on others in an ongoing endeavor such as the arts, sports, and academics. Will Nathaniel Freeman and his family please join me at the podium?
Good morning and welcome. It's great to see all of you. A seventh grader at Williams Middle IB School in Tampa, Nathaniel uses his incredible art, technological, and creative skills to produce images, games, and amazing experiences for other young people, especially underrepresented youth. In doing so, he inspires them to be creators and to work to build futures for all people. Possessing a keen interest in superheroes, this 12-year-old, who lives in Temple Terrace with his family, co-talked a superhero course to other students last summer. This incredible endeavor was part of the USF Sarasota Manatee, Florida Center for Partnerships in Arts Integrated Teaching. Nathaniel encouraged his students to develop superhero stories about themselves that focused on their own superpowers within. The course was so well-received that it was featured on Bay News Nine and ABC News, where he was referred to as "the pint-sized professor." Nathaniel is such a skilled artist that together we saw entry into, entry into the Hillsborough County Public Schools Future Voter sticker contest was the winner in the middle school category. The sticker perfectly reflects his dedication to collaboration, cooperation, and community. Nathaniel is an exceptional student. He was named to the Principal's Honor Roll three semesters straight, was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society this year, and also was inducted into the Florida McKnight National Achiever Society. Nathaniel also is a gifted speaker. Earlier this year, he spoke to more than 1,000 attendees at the Tampa Organization for Black Affairs MLK Breakfast, where he discussed the importance of continuing Dr. King's legacy. Nathaniel attends Mount Vernon Primitive Baptist Church, where he has participated in food drives and clothes giveaways. For his great initiative and drive, Nathaniel Freeman is the middle school recipient of the YEA Award in the leadership category. Congratulations, Nathaniel. You really are a superhero. I hope you keep creating.
My name is Nathaniel Freeman, and I would like to thank my family for being here to support me, preparing me for things, and if it were not for them, I probably wouldn't be here standing in front of you today. I would like to thank my, my two coding coaches for helping me learn how to program. I would like to thank Dr. Denise Davis Cotton for nominating me to be here. And I would like to thank the, the Board of Commissioners for choosing me to be here today. Thank you.
Our next winner is an amazing young man whose leadership and optimism are inspirations to us all. Would Hunter Anderson and his family please join me at the podium?
Good morning to you all. A senior at Durant High School, Hunter has grown into an extraordinary leader, especially with the Future Business Leaders of America, also known as FBLA. Throughout his tenure, he has proven himself as a consummate team player, most notably as president of the Durant High School Chapter of the organization. He collaborates with his peers so that they can nurture their leadership skills in order for their chapter to grow and to mold future leaders. Hunter's talents as a people person are a force to behold, as he skillfully gained sponsorships for students to visit numerous events that they would not have been able to attend due to financial constraints. The best example of Hunter's outreach was when he obtained sponsorship funding from members of the Valrico Fishhawk Chamber of Commerce to financially support 44 students to attend the FBLA State Leadership Conference in Orlando. Additionally, he is a member of the cross-country and soccer teams, the National Society, and has a GPA of 5.75. Hunter is a summer camp volunteer with his church and always steps up to assist other students if they are struggling with academics, academics, or any other aspect of their lives. His positive attitude can be contagious, which is why so many of his peers look up to him. It is no surprise that Hunter Anderson was chosen as the high school recipient of the YEA Award in the leadership category. Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I would just like to say that this is such an honor to receive this award, and I would just like to take this time to thank a few people. First of all, Ms. Sherman for nominating me for this award. She works at Durant High School, is one of my favorite teachers, and she's also my FBLA advisor. I'd also like to thank my coaches, my teachers, and of course, my parents and my family for inspiring me every day to become the leader I am today. And I'd also like to thank the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women for selecting me for this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapeda. And now Commissioner Cohen will present our next two awards.
Well, good morning, everybody. The YEA Award recipients in the volunteer or community service category give their time to make life better for others. This describes Gabrielle Lee to a T. Gabrielle, would you and your family please come to the podium?
Good morning. Good morning. Nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming. An eighth grader at Farnell Middle School in Tampa, Gabrielle Lee never lets an opportunity to help others pass her by. It doesn't matter where she is or what she's doing at the time. Known as Gabby, this energetic 13-year-old who lives in Tampa with her family, spent this summer volunteering at a gym her mom attends. She wiped down the exercise machines, vacuumed the floor, and made sure plenty of clean towels and disinfectant were available, ensuring a nice, healthy time was enjoyed by everyone working out. In addition, at the same gym, Gabby was the official photographer for a charity fundraiser event called Doggies and Dumbbells that helped shelter animals find forever homes. She showed the happy faces in front of those wagging tails. In addition, concerned that needy families didn't have enough to eat, Gabby initiated a food drive, encouraged her friends to help, and together they collected about 100 canned goods going door-to-door in her neighborhood, a phenomenal achievement. Recently, Gabby joined a school group called the Lady Diamonds, who collected food to donate to Feeding Tampa Bay, among other community services. A volleyball player and aspiring golfer, Gabby also knows about teamwork and helping classmates. Once, while waiting in the principal's office for her mom to pick her up from school, Gabby spotted a younger student struggling with his math homework. Naturally, Gabby came to the rescue, helping him earn fractions. Like, I could use that help sometimes, too. Like many other children, Gabby has overcome some unfair behavior by classmates, but the experience made her stronger and more determined to make a difference in others' lives. Gabby's drive and desire to improve the lives of others make her this year's YEA Award winner in the middle school volunteer or community service category. Great job, Gabby, and please come up and say a few words.
Hi, everyone. I'm proud to get this award for volunteering. Thank you so much, Hillsborough County, for giving me this award. I will always remember this day and this award, and will continue volunteering and helping out people in need. It always makes me happy. I'd also like to say thank you to my family for being here today and everyone. Thank you.
And would Jayan Patel and his family please join me at the podium? Good morning. Good morning. How are you? Good morning. Good morning. Jayan Patel, a junior at Hillsborough High School, is a natural leader, bringing with initiative and ambition. Jayan has been volunteering at the Hillsborough Education Foundation since May, assisting with organizing the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, or STEAM, lending library. This library is a critical resource used by teachers across Hillsborough County to borrow lesson kits for use in their classes. Recently, Jayan recognized the need to refresh and align STEAM kits with current state science standards. Jayan conducted research and compiled the appropriate materials to match the lesson plans and goals for elementary-level STEAM education. Not only did Jayan dedicate his personal time to this project, but he showed enthusiasm for making a larger and more direct impact on students' STEAM education. His work with the STEAM kits ultimately helps teachers show students the connection between what they are studying and the application of that content. His work benefits teachers and students countywide and makes lessons in the classroom more impactful. Jayan also serves in leadership roles at his high school. For instance, he founded the Coding Engineering Club at Hillsborough High School. He is the treasurer of Mu Alpha Theta, a math-oriented honor society, and is vice president of the chess club. Jayan also enjoys taking an active part in the school robotics scheme and participates in the school's Model United Nations Club. He has been a member of the Future Business Leaders of America Club since middle school and has been to state-level competitions twice. He has won the AP Scholar with Distinction Award and was Volunteer of the Month at Hillsborough Education Foundation. Jayan is also an accomplished in the academically challenging IB program. To top it off, Jayan is an avid fencer, recently competing on a regional level with aspiration for the nationals. For his service and commitment to help others in the community, Jayan Patel is the YEA Award high school recipient in the volunteer or community service category. Congratulations and thank you. And if you would like to say a few words?
First, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing me for this award, and I would like to thank my family, my teachers, Ms. Kristen, who is my mentor at the Hillsborough Education Foundation, along with Ms. Natalie and Ms. Kay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And now Commissioner Kemp will present our last two awards.
The YEA Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and have a positive impact on others. Would Gavin Shreve and his family please join me at the podium?
Good morning and welcome, Gavin. He attends Randall Middle School, knows all about turning challenges into triumphs. Gavin has had to navigate more health challenges in his 11 years than most adults. His perseverance and determination to push through pain and numerous hospitalizations while maintaining academic excellence is an incredible accomplishment. Despite missing over 100 days of elementary school due to unique health challenges, Gavin maintains straight As and was awarded the 2023 President's Award. He also earned exemplary scores on standardized tests and was accepted into an accelerated math program in sixth grade. Gavin's level of empathy for other kids and families going through medical challenges is remarkable. Gavin gives much of his free time towards fundraising for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation of Tampa Bay. His fundraising team is aptly named "braver than most," and he's been the top fundraising team for five years now in a row for the foundation's signature event, Take Steps, Tampa Bay. Gavin's also spent over eight years collecting toys for Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital. Last December, he collected over 1,000 items for young patients like himself. In addition to fundraising efforts, Gavin serves as a young spokesperson for the Crohn and Colitis Foundation, often publicly speaking at galas, fundraising events, and recently he was featured on ABC's Tampa Bay's Morning Blend Show in April. Gavin, your hard work, spirit, your ability to overcome challenges, I'm proud to recognize you as a middle school winner in the success despite difficult odds category. Oops. So congratulations to you. And would you like to, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Good morning. It is an honor and a privilege to be chosen to receive the Youth Excellence and Achievement Award. As you have heard, my childhood has not been without challenge, but from challenge comes greatness. I feel blessed to be able to help so many other people in this community. I enjoy everyone here to find the good in their hearts and help other people throughout the year. I also want to thank my family, the Board of Commissioners, and Ms. Summer Reyes for nominating me for this award. Thank you.
Thank you, and now we're going to take some pictures. We will now conclude this year's YEA Awards ceremony by introducing an incredible young woman whose perseverance is matched only by her incredible music talents. Would Caitlin Conrad and her mother, Lana Conrad, please join me at the podium?
Good morning and welcome. A senior at George M. Steinbrenner The Yay Award recipients in the Success Despite Difficult Odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and have a positive impact on others. Would Gavin Shreve and his family please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome, Gavin. He attends Randall Middle School, knows all about turning challenges into triumphs. Gavin has had to navigate more health challenges in his 11 years than most adults. His perseverance and determination to push through pain and numerous hospitalizations while maintaining academic excellence is an incredible accomplishment. Despite missing over 100 days of elementary school due to unique health challenges, Gavin maintained straight A's and was awarded the 2023 President's Award. He also earned exemplary scores on standardized tests and was accepted into an accelerated math program in sixth grade. Gavin's level of empathy for other kids and families going through medical challenges is remarkable. Gavin gives much of his free time towards fundraising for the Crohn's and Colitis Foundation of Tampa Bay. His fundraising team is aptly named braver than most, and he's been the top fundraising team for five years now in a row for the foundation's signature event, Takes Steps, Tampa Bay. Gavin's also spent over eight years collecting toys for Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital. Last December, he collected over 1,000 items for young patients like himself. In addition to fundraising efforts, Gavin serves as a young spokesperson for the Crohn and Colitis Foundation, often publicly speaking at galas, fundraising events, and recently he was featured on ABC's Tampa Bay's Morning Blend Show in April. Gavin, your hard work, spirit, your ability to overcome challenges, I'm proud to recognize you as a middle school winner in the Success Despite Difficult Odds category. Oops. So congratulations to you. And would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Good morning. It is an honor and a privilege to be chosen to receive the Youth Excellence and Achievement Award. As you have heard, my childhood has not been without challenge, but from challenge comes greatness. I feel blessed to be able to help so many other people in this community. I enjoy everyone here to find the good in their hearts and help other people throughout the year. I also want to thank my family, the Board of Commissioners, and Ms. Summer Reyes for nominating me for this award. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to take some pictures. woman whose perseverance is matched only by her incredible music talents. Would Caitlin Conrad and her mother, Lana Conrad, please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome. A senior at George M. Steinbrenner High School, this determined 17-year-old is proof that her musician soul can outperform any physical challenge. Hearing impaired since birth, Caitlin's learned at an early age to always be a victor of the challenges that she faces and to never be a victim. A person with many passions and a dedicated volunteer over 100 hours of assisting hearing impaired students, she perfected her gift as an award-winning clarinettist. Caitlin has won medals for her solo work and her ensemble work, played in community honor bands, and earned second chair spot in the top band as an incoming freshman. And she's kept that spot for the next three years. She's even appeared in a 25 clarinet recording of Jambo mentored by Tony Negron, which is posted on YouTube, so we can all go there, right? Additionally, Caitlin spends hours before and after classes and during lunch mentoring junior students who have difficulties in learning the music or band drill so that they can feel as confident as she does. She's maintained her honor roll status while living and breathing her band duties. And yet she seeks each opportunity to play in honor bands such as All County, Festival Winds, Bay Winds, and the School Musical. Her high school band has been invited to play in the New Year's Day Parade in London in 2024. That's really, yeah, it's really exciting. The pinnacle of her musical past so far. In recognition of Caitlin's strength, her hard work, and caring heart, I'm happy to recognize her as the Yay Award winner in the Success Despite Difficulties Odds category for high school students. And you're welcome to say a few words.
Yes. Good morning. I'd first like to thank the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners for recognizing me for the honor it is to receive this award. I'd like to thank my mother for always supporting and inspiring me. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Hillsborough County educators, mentors, guidance counselors, and social workers that have gotten me through my journey, 12 through K. Thank you.
And now we'll take a few photos. Everyone, right now we'll call everyone up to be in a photo. I'd like to invite all Yay Award recipients to gather for a group photo. I guess just the recipients.
We are very proud of you. And on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for all that you do to help make Hillsborough County's future very, very bright. This concludes the Hillsborough County's 2023 Yay Award Ceremony. We'll take a brief pause to allow the winners to exit the boardroom if you wish, and then we'll proceed with Commissioner Wostel's final proclamation. So you can stay if you'd like or feel free to leave.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioners, don't get used to seeing me up here. Today, we have one proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Master Deputy Marilyn Alvarez, Hispanic Liaison for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Public Affairs Office, please join me at the podium? And all of the guests. It's not in the script, but please come up. Good morning, Mrs. Milan. All right. Everyone fit into the camera shot. Good morning and welcome. It is a pleasure to recognize and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic Americans, specifically those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Hispanic Americans are vital to the prosperity of Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, and the United States. Their legacy helps strengthen our county's economy, education, cultural growth, and diversity. Each year, Hillsborough County recognizes September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. I am very excited to present this proclamation, which honors the numerous accomplishments made by Hispanic Americans today and throughout our county's history. The proclamation reads, "One of the greatest treasures of the United States is the variety of its people and cultures, and Hispanic Americans are an integral part of the nation." And according to the United States Census Bureau, over 62 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, the nation's largest minority group, with approximately 6 million in Florida and over 460,000 in Hillsborough County, which is over 30% of the county's population. Hillsborough County is host to a rich Hispanic community with ties to Cuba, Colombia, Puerto Rico, Mexico, the Dominican Republic, Spain, Costa Rica, Venezuela, and other nations. And the vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, sciences, business world, academia, the U.S. Armed Forces, athletics, and government. And Hispanic Americans' contribution enriched the country's heritage and helped establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all that is best about the nation. And Hispanic Heritage Week was commenced under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968 to pay tribute to Hispanic Americans and was broadened by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the numerous contributions of local Hispanic American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does hereby declare September 15 through October 15, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to the nation, state, and Hillsborough County executed this 18th day of October, 2023. And Master Deputy Alvarez, would you please share a few words with us?
No worries. I was told to keep this short and sweet, even though we are Hispanic. So first of all, Commissioner--
Not in the script.
So first of all, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to all of the Commissioners for recognizing the achievements that our Hispanic community make here in Hillsborough County, and we're truly appreciated, you know, all the support that you all give us. And in order, now, I'm going to present Ellie Rodriguez, Hispanic Liaison for Hillsborough County, and amazing job that she does, to introduce our special guests.
Thank you, Marilyn. And thank you, Commissioner Wostel and the Board of County Commissioners, for recognizing the contributions of Hispanic Americans in our county. I wanted to take a moment to introduce just a sampling of Hispanic leaders and organizations who work every day to enrich the lives of the Hispanic community in our county. Number one, you've already met Marilyn Alvarez. Just to let you know, we have already told her that she is not allowed to retire anytime soon. She is 26-plus years with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and an integral part of what we do every day. She's also a member of the Mayor's Hispanic Advisory Council and the 2017 Tampa Hispanic Woman of the Year. Next is Maribel Garrett. She's back there. Community Engagement Coordinator and Hispanic Liaison for the City of Tampa. She's the past president of the Tampa Hispanic Heritage Incorporated and just incredible leader in our county. Next, Maria Torres, President of the Tampa Hispanic Heritage Incorporated and also a member of the Mayor's Hispanic Advisory Council. Monica Rodriguez, President of the Latino Coalition of Tampa Bay, and also a 2021 Tampa Hispanic Woman of the Year. Catalin Carraio, President of the Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council, which I also happen to be a member of, and that group does some incredible things for this county. Marines Mateos, President of the Hispanic Professional Women's Association. Danielle Hernandez, President of the Tampa Latin Chamber of Commerce. Mercedes Young, President of the Tampa Bay Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And we had a little addition to our group, which we love, Ms. Nancy Milan, Hillsborough County Tax Collector, and thank you so very much for this recognition.
Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda? And I understand with one of the changes, we're going to make a change to one of the changes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been deferred to November 1. This is Item A45, which is to approve the budgets in 2022 non-advalorem assessment rates of 39 special-dependent districts in Hillsborough County. Item F1, which is the one that might be changed, is to be deferred to November 1, which is the B O C C appointments. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Wostel, which is Item A2. This is to approve a state housing initiative partnership program funding agreement for local government contribution in the amount not to exceed $115,000, a home investment partnership program agreement in the amount not to exceed $4 million, and a HOPE Act Local Housing Fund agreement in the amount not to exceed $2 million between Hillsborough County and Blue St. Francis Limited to fund construction costs with Casa de Francesco, 140-unit affordable elderly rental apartment community in Sefner, Florida. Item D1 is at 10:00 a.m. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed pathways to removing obstacles to housing, which is known as the P R O Housing Grant. This is for an award up to $10 million of the grant for property located in the Palm River Census Designated Place. Item G1 at 10:15 is to receive a joint report from the county attorney's office and the county administration regarding term limits for B O C C boards and councils. 11:45 is recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move up, Pearl.
Second.
All right. And it's my understanding that with F1 that we were going to take up A and B, but the others will be deferred? Is that accurate?
I think if one of the board members makes that motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
So it requires a motion to change the addendum? Or can we just verbally say we're going to take up--
Well, you normally accept the changes to the addendum, so you can accept those changes but for F1, A and B? Or you can accept the changes as I read them?
Okay. So we'll vote on the changes with the exception of F1, and we'll do that next. So the motion by Commissioner Kemp, what was the second? Who did the second? Commissioner Myers. This is for the changes other than F1. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And the motion for F1 is Commissioner Owen.
Yeah. In a point of order, I guess I'm just confused. If something's on there and it gets pulled like that, I guess for it to be pulled, for it to be removed after 2 o'clock the previous day, wouldn't there have needed to be a motion to do that anyways? I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused on the procedure. Yeah.
Sorry, that was before 2 o'clock.
Okay.
But if you would like to include F1, A and B, you can make a motion to hear that at this time.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to make, a motion to hear F1, A and B.
And I'll second.
All right. And then we'll defer the remaining appointments. All right, we have a motion, a second, no comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. We'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, as requested at the same time, when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally at Commissioner or a staff member, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name, speak clearly in the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. We have five people signed up this morning. The first one is David Coleman, and then followed by Sean Wilson.
Good morning. Dave Coleman from North Tampa. Traffic and transportation are right behind housing as top priorities at our future land use meetings. This morning, you will decide on sidewalks in A26 and whether it matters. There is no stop signs at an intersection in A14, a personal injury case. I hope at least you Googled that map location and looked at the little pictures of it. There's zero stop sign. There's no traffic device at all there. And a woman got T-boned in that, and she's bringing a case, apparently. And I guess you want to refuse it and go through a court battle. Anyway, with 220-something traffic deaths, that's just under five a week, and 7,450 hit-and-runs last year in Hillsborough alone, we should care very much. I attended a community meeting in Sulphur Springs a while ago. One high priority was sidewalks. They have none. One of our most blighted communities, ignored by the FDOT for decades on Nebraska Avenue, which is their main street, but back in the neighborhood, without curbs and sidewalks, people park on lawns, forcing pedestrians into the street. They've been waiting forever. Who's getting the sidewalk money? Will you pull this to South County like you try and do everything else? I ask you to address Sulphur Springs' needs. A27 is about nitrogen and our-- On A43 is Communico. Is that for booking events for our libraries, or is that a way to sneak in how you guys want to monitor kids, what books they take out? Because they offer both services. I'd really like more information on the 100 or so agenda items per month you guys like run through here on our $9 billion budget. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Sean Wilson, followed by Joseph DeVito, which is virtual, and then Debbie Hunt. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sean Wilson. I'm the President of Blue Sky Communities with offices at 180 Fountain Parkway North. First, I quiero reconocer la proclamación que dio el Comisionado Wustel. Muchas gracias por también reconocer todo el pueblo latino aquí en el Condado de Hillsborough. I share those sentiments. I want to thank Commissioner Wustel for recognizing the Hispanic community. That's a community with whom I share a household, and so it's very near and dear to my heart. And I think it's really important that we recognize diversity and vibrancy and the strength that they bring to Hillsborough County. I'm here today to ask for your support on Item A2. That is Casa de Francesco. It's a 140-unit elderly affordable housing community to be built in the Mango area. We've been working together with St. Francis Church on this for about four years. The building is going to be on the grounds of the St. Francis Church, across the street from a nice shopping center with a Walmart and a Publix, right next to a county building. We really had no neighborhood opposition when we came through the rezoning process, so we're comfortable that this is going to be a good fit for the neighborhood. You know, for the entire four years we've been working on this, Hillsborough County has really stood with us and supported us, not only on the rezoning, but also helping us get our applications competitive for funding to the state, which we did win. And then for providing funding, the county is, did provide funding already. That was voted on. Today's vote is the vote for the approval of the final loan documents for Casa de Francesco. And those loan documents have been negotiated. We do weekly meetings with county staff and the county attorney's office, and we're joined on those calls by staff from the State Housing Agency, their attorneys, and also the folks from Chase and Raymond James. That's the private investors. So everybody's worked really hard. There's a lot of people counting on Hillsborough County to get us over the finish line. We have all of our permits, which is great, too, and we're ready to close the loans, we're ready to start construction, and we're ready to deliver 140 new apartment units to deserving seniors in Hillsborough County. The county funding is well-leveraged, so this is also a great deal financially for Hillsborough County. We're, Blue Sky and St. Francis Church are able to leverage county funds about 19 to 1. So we think there's a lot of good things about this development, and we appreciate your support up until now, and we ask for your support today. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Joseph DeVito, it's on virtual.
Yes, Commissioners, my name is Joseph DeVito, and my address is 200 Central Avenue in St. Petersburg. I'm an attorney with Trenton Law, but I represent the Catholic Diocese of St. Petersburg and have done so for 43 years. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to appear virtually this morning. My schedule did not permit me to be there in person. And I also want to acknowledge the working relationship the Diocese has enjoyed with the county for many, many of my 43 years, in all aspects, whether it's this site, other easements, other properties, rights of way, other programs. We've had a great relationship all these years, and this is our first attempt at a tax credit deal with affordable housing for low-income elderly. We partnered, so to speak, with Blue Sky Communities to use their expertise, since that's not what we do. However, we maintain control of the organizational structure with 51% voting interest, and we maintain a strong working relationship with Blue Sky. With all due respect to developers that are in the room, no offense, Sean, the Diocese is just like the county. We are here for the long run. The county does not need to worry about us taking the money and run or abandoning this project. I do want to correct one thing. It is on the campus of St. Francis of Assisi Church, but it will be deeded to a separate entity at the time of closing, and it will have its own campus. We will share ingress and egress to minimize traffic and other concerns. The Diocese is mission-driven. We are not here for, because, we are not here for Catholics. We are here because we are Catholic. And this project will serve all people. It will be open to all elderly citizens who qualify based upon low-income limits. Fair housing will apply to all of the rental applications. It helps not just to meet the need of affordable housing, but the low-income elderly. Some of you may recall the HUD 202 program. There are 14 elderly 202 programs the Diocese has in our five counties. That program went away, and the only source of funding now comes from these tax credit, which are way more complicated than I thought I would ever understand. However, we've gotten through these three or four years of planning, crossing the hurdles, and we are now almost to the finish line. And I'm asking for your support, your continued support, to approve the funding package that is before you and the loan documents. And I have, any questions, be happy to address them. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Our last two speakers, Debbie Hunt, and then followed by Rico Smith. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm Debbie Hunt. I'm with the Hillsborough County Citizens Defending Freedom. And I want to thank you for your foresight and willingness to terminate the county's relationship with the American Library Association. And thank you, Commissioner Owens, for raising the issue and for starting that conversation. I want to speak to the agenda item G2, which is parental choices of minor access to library materials. And I do want to thank Andrew Bidenbaugh and Library Services for really digging into this issue and coming back with some options that give parents the rights to identify what materials are appropriate for their children to access and review and check out from the library system. In the proposal, it's so important that children are accessing materials that are appropriate to their age, because their frontal lobe, their brain, has only developed to a certain point at certain ages and doesn't fully develop until they're 25. And so when they're exposed to materials that are inappropriate to them, it really changes who they are and what they become in life. So I just wanted to thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Last speaker, Rico Smith.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, residents of Hillsborough County. My name is Rico Smith. I am a proud resident, and I am also a candidate for Hillsborough County Commission, District 6, countywide. Times are changing, not necessarily for the better. Last month alone, inflation reports came in at 0.4%. Core inflation excluding energy and food came in at 4.1% risen over the past 12 months. This has doubled the Fed's targets, indicating tremendous financial strain for local families in this community. Our elderly are struggling with property tax increases. Our young people, with mortgage rates on the rise, homeownership seems unobtainable and out of reach for many of us here in Hillsborough County. So I have to ask the question and truly think about this. Are we doing everything to ensure a more prosperous Hillsborough? Just a few weeks ago, the City of Tampa faced a proposed millage rate increase, and response from our community was profound and immediate. Residents voiced their discontent, and that passion serves as a reminder to all of us that it should not be our first instinct to look at increased spending or increasing taxes, but perhaps look at where that money is going. For instance, and to his credit, Commissioner Wustel brought to light the murky handling of funds directed to nonprofits over the past few years. This underscores the importance of being meticulous. Pain, and every dollar counts, especially when it's coming from hard-working residents already feeling the squeeze. I want to reiterate my commitment here to Hillsborough County. I stand here today before you as a champion for our residents, and this is a reminder that our government at all levels, and yes, I mean local level, has the duty to judiciously employ our tax dollars. Together, we have a chance to bring back a future built on accountability, trust, and prosperity. So I invite every member of this commission to please stand alongside me in our shared mission, and together we will bring sound leadership, good policies, and thrive. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on the consent.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, you have 10:00 a.m.?
Yes, sir. It's 10:00 a.m. We can take Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing related to the pro-grant for $10 million. This is for a property located in the Palm River Census Designated Place. And Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, will present this item.
Good morning, Cheryl.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, Equity and Community Impact. This morning, we're here to, A, conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the proposed pathways to removing obstacles to housing, which is the PRO Housing Grant. The purpose of this application is for an award up to $10 million PRO Housing Grant to prepare vacant county-owned property located at 4409 Foxworth Road in the Palm River Census Designated Place, for the development and to provide construction funding for the, for development of affordable multifamily rental and home rental units. And B, to close the public comment period that began in October 1st, 2023, and C, adopt and approve the PRO Housing Grant application for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the Chair or County Administrator to execute upon arrival the grant agreements with HUD and the HUD-required certifications related to the funding as needed as approved by the County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing. There is no fiscal impact, no additional county funds are required as a result of this item. If the PRO Housing Grant funded is awarded, the estimated fiscal impact of the PRO Housing Grant award is for an award up to $10 million. And just for reference, this piece of property was also purchased with the Neighborhood Stabilization Funds, and those are, were HUD funds as well.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. What do you want to like to speak to this item? No, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Wustel.
How much did we pay for the property?
I want to say, I can't recall, and I want to give you the correct information, sir, but the property was purchased in 2011 or 2012. And because of the stringent requirements on the property, it has been difficult to develop. We are working to get the property transitioned over to, under CDBG requirements, which would give us some flexibility in the income levels as well.
So we don't know how much the value of the property is today, then?
No, not without a current appraisal.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Wustel voted no.
All right, thank you. B1?
Thank you. We can now go to B1. This is to approve the agreement with Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau during businesses visit Tampa Bay, and Ron Barton will present this item, as well as Item B2 thereafter.
Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. This is Item B1. It's to approve an agreement with Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., DBA Visit Tampa Bay for FY '24 and FY '25, to support its role as a designated marketing organization for Hillsborough County to include out-of-area marketing and promotions of areas, for areas of attracting tourists and conventions to our destination. The term of the agreement is for October 1st, 2023, through September 30, 2025, in the amounts of tourist development tax funding up to $25,775,427, and up to $26,824,964 for FY '25. Funding for this agreement is included in the tourist development tax budget for FY ' '24, adopted budget, and will be included in the recommended budget for FY '25. And also, I'd like to note that there is a Scrivener's error for one of the exhibits. Exhibit E needs to be retitled Exhibit D, and the pages that go with it will change from E1 through 4 to D1 through 4. And then following that, you pick up with the appropriate exhibit E. And I'll also make that note for the next item as well, because we had, that's Scrivener's error for both items. I'm here available for any questions and ask for your approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wustel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barton, I have a few questions. You and I have worked on some of the language of this tourist development tax. You gave one definition, they gave a different definition. I called the state, and they gave a different definition. I don't know if anyone knows up from down on what this actual law is that governs these taxes. I mainly want to point to item, to exhibit A3, I have some questions about their budget that I'm hoping you can shed some light on. I read that in the agreement that they're required to provide us some pretty transparent financials. I'm hoping I'm confused, so maybe you can walk me through what my confusion is. But the way that I read it is that currently about 25% of their budget is for compensation and benefits, and that 51% is for research, reporting, and forecasting. But the way I thought this organization existed was that they were a marketing company, and it seems that less than 5% actually goes to advertising. So I'm just, I'm having, I'm having issues understanding where the priority focus is of their spending and what this, why 51% of it is for research, reporting, and forecasting. Are they a research institution, or are they a marketing institution, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out? I saw that they were supposed to provide a lot of financials. If we don't have the answers, I would certainly like a general ledger delivered to me so I can understand salaries and what these actual expenditures are going towards. Do you know any of these details?
Well, I'll start backwards in your comments. Yes, we'll have to get you that information associated with the details on the financials. I have Jolynn with me, Loki with me as well from Visit Tampa Bay. I'm sure she can answer some of those questions.
Okay.
I would just say, you know, that marketing is targeted based on research. And so I'm not going to speak for them, but I know that they have come and talked to the Tourist Development Council and this Board in their reports, and they refer to, you know, a lot of their research initiatives. So it's not only trying to help target where to market, how to market, but it's also research associated with evaluating the success of that marketing. So a lot of that is research and forecasting, independent of deploying dollars outside agencies and, and marketing and publicity in that regard. So that would be my, my first response to that.
I mean, if that's true, it almost seems like then they spent $24 million to figure out how to spend two and a half on marketing.
Would be the best way to address this. Jolynn, do you feel you can address the issue? I'm trying to find the exhibit itself.
Oh, yeah, it's A3.
Thank you.
Tampa Bay CVB Budget.
associated with evaluating the success of that marketing. So a lot of that is research and forecasting, independent of deploying dollars outside agencies and, and marketing and publicity in that regard. So that would be my, my first response to that.
I mean, if that's true, it almost seems like then they spent $24 million to figure out how to spend two and a half on marketing.
Now, um, what would be the best way to address this? Jolynn, do you feel you can address the issue? I'm trying to find the exhibit itself.
Oh, yeah, it's A3.
Thank you.
Tampa Bay CVB Budget. It's just that now that I know that a lot of these funds, it turns out, could actually be being used to create connectivity, safer walking environments around some of these big destinations, I'm very interested to make sure that how this money is being spent. I mean, if 50% of their budget is really going to research, I need to, I need to understand how that is the most reasonable way to spend eight figures of money. That's what I'm trying to work towards.
Jolynn Loki with Visit Tampa Bay.
Hi, Ms. Loki.
Hello. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for my ability to respond. I, there may be a line item off. First, there's 23% of our total budget goes to all administrative costs for compensation, benefits, workman's comp insurance, et cetera. The majority of the rest of our budget goes to programming, and those are all sales and marketing initiatives. The advertising itself is the bulk of our budget. It's the $24 million, and there's a small slice of that that is, as Ron said, that goes to, we research our feeder markets, what the consumer's doing, and spend a lot of time following them and targeting them so that they stay longer, spend more money in the market. So I think there may be a line item off, or some things a bit amiss, because I'm very familiar with the budget, and the majority of it goes to programming.
If, if that's true, then I'm, I can't vote on this if, if I'm not being presented accurate information about your financials. I, I just, this is pretty detailed and breakout, and I'm, if, this is a pretty easy and fair question, I think, from my position. I've got people in here every two weeks telling me that they can't afford to live, and every two to four years, this county finds a reason to run a new tax on its citizens to fix those ailments. And when we have organizations like this that are getting a large amount that could have a portion of money spent towards not having to run new taxes, I need to be able to have information in front of me that clearly articulates what their taxes are being spent on. So it, it doesn't anywhere say that you're spending close to $24 million on programming, as you referred to it, or advertising. So if I, it sounds like I can't have an honest conversation because I haven't gotten correct information.
I understand fully, and we're, we're happy to get back to you with the details because that bulk of this budget in front of you, the 13 million, is directed towards advertising. So somewhere between us sending the information to the county and it getting in front of you, this is off by one, one line item.
I don't, I guess I don't know what you mean by off by one line item. I, 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 um, it's, it's 13.7 million, says, for research, reporting, and forecasting. That sounds very specific. That would sound like a, if you-
That's our advertising and paid media in the line item above it, so it, it's off by, by one line. Again, I'm not sure how that happened from, that's not what we budgeted, and I don't believe that's what was sent to the county, but somehow in front of you, it's off by one line. So the description of the expenditures aren't matching the line item to the right. It's off by one.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that we defer the item, and we'll bring back both the information, and if there's an error in the exhibit, then we'll make it clear, and we'll clean it up. So I'd, I'd ask to defer the item.
Yeah, I was going to ask you if this was time-sensitive, or if it could be.
Yeah, we can defer it. We'll bring it in the next meeting.
I yield, Mr. Chair.
Richard Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, I would like to add to that. My concerns is that the, that first 3%, 75% of that goes to Visit Tampa Bay.
That's correct.
And we're talking right now, as we see in there, nearly 52 million, 53, 52 million, 25.775 million annually. So-
Right. Yeah, that's-
That's, that's annually. So in two years, you know-
Yes, that's correct.
Double that.
The-
And 75% of that goes to Visit Tampa Bay.
Right.
It's a lot of money for advertising.
What the Commissioner's referring to is, we have a formula that was adopted about six to eight years ago that was recommended by the TDC and approved by this board, and it's a formula approach to the sharing of the TDT revenue to partners. And so clearly, Visit Tampa Bay, we believe, is one of our most significant partners. And so the allocation that, that you're referring to, so I can clarify for the rest of the board, is the net revenues from the three cent only. We, we allocate 75% to Visit Tampa Bay, another 5% to Tampa Bay Sports Commission, and 1.5% to the Film Commission. The balance, which is, I think, 18.5% goes to other designated programs, which we've, will be bringing to you as part of the out-of-area marketing. So that, I just wanted to clarify for everybody else. That's the, the reference she's speaking to about how we allocate.
Yes, I believe that 75% is just too large of a percentage for that amount of money to go to that one Visit Tampa Bay.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you, you kind of clarified what my question was going to be right there. But, but all this, these documents and everything, the, these are, before they get to us, they go through the TDC first, and everything's approved that way.
That's correct.
Okay. And, because I, I was just looking at how the item was agenda, and it shows the first 3% portion, and then from the 6%, is that 6% or 6%?
Six, it's 6%.
Should be sixth. Right, okay, I got you. Okay, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Kemp?
I think, I agree with your suggestion, a motion to defer this. I, I think it's good that we have more time to look at it in a couple of weeks to have it.
Second? Okay, we got a motion to defer B1 to November, it's on November 1st, I think. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Owen, Commissioner Wostel?
Just, thank you, Chair. I just have one quick clarification. Who, like, I know that there's a law that grants Visit Tampa Bay or an agency to do that role, but like, who owns Visit Tampa Bay? I was going through Florida SunBiz for these two. Like, how did that, how does that work?
We're not owned by anyone. We're a 501(c)(6), and it started in 1985 as a group of people that we were set up to market for Hillsborough County at that time.
So you, I mean, but you were set up by five people, you founded it, state grants, a local authority, I understand that, to, to disperse these funds. So then who, who, like, who hires your CEO? How about that?
Our Board of Directors. We have a 27-person Board of Directors, and that consists of hoteliers and leaders of venues and attractions across the county.
And who, who picked those Board of Directors?
We have a nominating committee of the Board of Directors each year, and that consists of three officers of the Board and two additional Board members.
And, I mean, I feel like I'm getting like a lead in a circle here. So then who picked the nominating committee?
Our bylaws dictate that it's our chair, our past chair, and our incoming chair, and two additional members. And our bylaws also state, well, the TDC states that our Board has to be, we have to have so many hoteliers, so many attractions, so many restaurateurs. So it's very specific of the members on our Board to ensure that the entire tourism industry is represented.
Do we, um, thank you very much, Ms. Loki. Do we advertise, or, like, who's going to get to be this agency, or is it just permanent sole source, Visit Tampa Bay? Or could it technically be a different agency then, since this seems to be created by five people that I don't know? It seems like a lot of NGOs in charge of $26 million a year, is what it feels like.
So I'll, I'll try to answer some of that. So, no, we don't procure it. This is the standard model used throughout the country, which is basically convention, there's a Convention and Visitors Bureau that represents a destination, and each maybe has its own story about origin. Many of them, from my experience, came out of Chamber of Commerce's originally, and then realized the business of Convention and Visitors bureaus is different than a chamber, and so they tended to split off and become their own entity. So that's, there's an evolution that's across the country that's consistent with that. So my guess is there probably was a predecessor even to, you know, Visit Tampa Bay in 85. I don't know that history.
I was born in 84.
Yeah. So, but yes, so, to your point, industry leaders gather up, and there was a, there's basically a linkage between the adoption of tourist development tax dollars, which specify marketing as one of its key components, and the evolution of Convention and Visitors bureaus, including Visit Tampa Bay, to be that designated marketing agency. Government's not going to do that. It's not something that you, that you create a department in government to market a community. And it's also not as simple as just, well, can't we go, can't we all go authorize four or five ad agencies to promote us? It's, that's helter-skelter as well. It's not strategic. So there's much into the, you know, sausage making that I'm sure Jolynn and Santiago can cheer with you independently. In fact, I'd-
I don't want to cut you off, I don't want to cut you off, Ron. These are great questions by Commissioner Wostel. You're giving great responses, but I'm not sure this conversation is really germane to the motion. So I want to kind of keep it on the motion, and if we need to have a broader discussion another time, we can, you know, more than happy to do that.
I'll yield.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hold off. I, I was really just going to make the point that Mr. Barton did, that this was an outgrowth of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and this is, I believe, the model used across the country for, you know, different communities as they book conventions and market themselves to business groups, et cetera. And I believe Visit Tampa Bay was the Convention and Visitors Bureau many years ago, and they changed their name, you know, just, I think, probably for marketing purposes.
We still are Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, doing business as Visit Tampa Bay.
Got it.
It's more friendly to the consumer.
Okay, so we got a motion to defer it to November 1st by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Owen, I believe. No other comments, please record your vote.
Thanks. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
I'm still here. B2. This is approve an agreement with Tampa Bay Sports Commission, Inc. for FY24 and FY25 to support its operational support out-of-area marketing and event bidding and hosting for purposes of attracting sports-based tourists to our destination. The term of the agreement is from October 1st, 2023 through September 30, 2025, in the amounts of tourist development tax funding up to $1,512,000 from, from the first three cent in FY24, and up to $1,574,000, again, from the three cent portion for FY25. Funds are included in the approved TDT budget for FY24, adopted, and will be included in the recommended budget for FY25. And I would note the same Scrivener's error that I mentioned earlier, that we need to adjust four pages that were misidentified as Exhibit E that should be Exhibit D.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar questions, Mr. Barton. Who owns this company? I, I also looked that up. I was on SunBiz, I was trying to, I'm trying to figure out and unwind this will of revolving doors of our taxes. So do we know, like, is this created by the state? I couldn't find that one. Because I got confused for a little while, there was the Tampa Sports Authority, and I actually had someone come and visit me, and I thought that they, I was interquining the two organizations, so.
Hey, Commissioner Wostel, I'm Rob Higgins from the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. We're totally separate from the Tampa Sports Authority.
Right.
The Tampa Bay Sports Commission is a 501(c)(3) private not-for-profit.
So who owns you?
We're a private not-for-profit that reports to a Board of Directors.
Okay, so we're-
There's no, there's no ownership in a, in a charity, a not-for-profit such as that.
So then it's the exact same situation then, I guess, except this one's a 501(c)(3). The other one I was just saying was 501(c)(6). So you don't, so you don't claim ownership. So who created you?
We had a group of individuals, of stakeholders, that came together. So our Board of Directors is made up of our local professional sports franchises, our college athletic departments, as well as private partners. We're really a, a public-private partnership of sorts, because we receive public funding, but then also have great private stewards that also contribute to our organization.
I don't have as many questions about your organization. Your budget is, is pretty nominal. It sounds like, why, you negotiate contracts, and that's why you're so labor, labor-heavy?
No, we actually have a lot of private dollars that aren't reflected in that.
Okay.
Those are only, that's only the TDC budget. It's on most years, depending on the major event that we have in town, it's about a 50-50 split, public to private. I will tell you, though, based off the return on investment for the amount of TDC money that we get, we actually return more back to the county to increase the amount of TDC dollars available. So happy to walk you through the last few years in terms of what your contribution was, and then what we returned to the pot, but I can tell you, it exceeds it every year. So you're actually, a vote for, our agreement is actually a vote for making money.
Yeah, I, I didn't really have concerns for your organization, just more of, I'm trying to understand the existence of the two. I, I think I'm, I'm starting to get there. Like I said, your, your budget is pretty nominal, and I don't really have any concerns about it. I guess, did we initiate with you through the Sports Authority, or how, how did we?
No, two totally separate organizations. The Sports Authority is, is, you know, a public entity that has appointments from the county, the city, as well as the state. The way that we interface is, is, for the most part, they operate venues such as Raymond James Stadium, the Hillsborough County Tournament Sports Plex, the municipal golf courses. We help market them. So in addition to the tenant events, we go out and bid on events to help bring them here to create the visitor spending and increase bed tax that takes place here. So it's really a great one-two punch from that partnership when it comes to both the Sports Authority and the Sports Commission.
And then your return is from, do you collect some type of fee from ticket sales generation, or?
No, the return, in addition to helping fill the hotels and you receiving that bed tax back, the return is these visitors come here, spend money in our hotels, our restaurants, our shops. I mean, we're talking about thousands upon thousands of visitors each year. This past year, for example, we had over 70 events that we recruited here that generated 250,000 hotel visitor room nights. And that's not one person staying in those 250,000 hotels. When you talk about youth sporting events, as well as, you know, these major events we bring to the community, you got tons of people piling in those rooms and then spending money while they're here.
Oh, I, I get it. No, I, I appreciate it. I, and thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Motion approved. Commissioner Kemp?
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please record your vote.
Thanks. Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Ron. Bonnie, at 10:15?
Yes, our 10:15 is item G1. This is to receive a joint report from the County Attorney's Office and County Administration regarding term limits for BOCC boards and councils. This was a future-issue item. Mary Helen Ferris is here to present item G1.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the County Attorney's Office. On May 3rd, Commissioner Myers requested the county administration, the county attorney's office, to bring back a report on possible term limits for boards and councils in an effort to create opportunities for more people to serve on these bodies. The report has some background information, some examples of boards that have term limits, some examples of boards that could have term limits. I would like to note that this was just preliminary research, and depending on the direction of the Board, we might have to go back because there's at least over 40 boards and councils that we would have to review. The report concludes with three possible legal options for the Board to consider, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mayor Helen, for bringing this item forward. Our Board members, as you all know, during the past, I have asked that, and thank those members who have served on our boards and councils, that we be able to give opportunities to others who have applied- to others who have applied but do not have the opportunity to serve. And so in looking at term limits, I just want to share with us some of the information that I found, that some of the people who have served, we have some that have served 18 years, 36 years, 22 years, 16 years, 19 years, just to mention a few. And I think where we have other citizens who've applied to serve on our boards and councils, we keep reappointing the same individuals. And I think it's now time that we consider the opportunity to have those individuals who have served already sit out of term, they can reapply again to serve on the board, but also give the opportunity to those who express a desire to serve on our boards and councils. I'd like to hear from my colleagues before I make a motion.
I do have questions, comments. Commissioner Walstall?
You know, I have an impending item, too, that I feel like we're drowning in boards and councils, many of which can't meet quorum. I haven't seen all of the data yet, which also comes with extreme cost from staff to set up these boards that don't even meet quorum. So I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm all about term limits, I just don't know if these have any overlap, or maybe we, maybe we expense of, of this item, and then mine comes into place, and maybe term limits just won't matter for those specific boards anyways. I, I did see that some people on the Parks Board, I don't, I don't remember which ones, had like 18, 20 years. There seems to be a lot of rollover, and you don't want, I guess, unseen power unintentionally lying with one person on these boards that may or may not make suggestions to us, that we, we do seem to take a lot of suggestions from these councils and just kind of vote yes with whatever they provide, so I don't know. It's a lot, the, the feedback from staff seemed like it was going to be extremely difficult to, to get, is that what, basically, I, I understood, it seemed like there were a lot of variables, that it would be kind of untenable to get a realistic outcome or achievable goal. I don't know, it's...
Well, we would, there are, like I said, so many boards and councils, and depending on the direction of the board, we would have to look at each one to see if term limits could be imposed, and which boards may or may not be necessary anymore. I think there was, some staff was working on looking at those individually.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I want term limits for a lot of people, so.
A lot of people want term limits on me, too, so I know the feeling. Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I, I think, I'm open-minded to whatever you guys want to look at. I actually agree with Commissioner Walstall that I bet there are some, we could pare it down a bit. Forty boards sounds like, it's perhaps gotten a little bit unwieldy over the years, good intentions, creating boards for all kinds of things, but particularly boards that don't meet, boards that might be superfluous, I think it's a good idea to look at that. If in this, at the same time, you want to look at, at term limits for certain boards, you know, I think, from, from what I saw of the report, we probably would have to go through each board and determine how we want to handle them individually, but I'm certainly open to doing that in conjunction with looking at, paring it down, and I'll support them. If that's the direction your motion goes, I'll support that. But, you know, some, some things, it may be good to have some institutional knowledge, and it may not be appropriate to impose a term limit. So I think a case-by-case basis would be, would be advisable.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, I always say, there, there are term limits on everything, every two to four to six years, but this is, these are not elected bodies. And one of my big issues when I came on the board as a new board member was honestly finding some people to fill some of these. I, a lot of Commissioner White's appointments, we're doing a great job, Parks, for example. I would not want to be limited to reappoint them, because let's face it, a lot of these are volunteer-type of jobs, where people are taking time away from their family and friends, and if they're doing a good job, you know, I would be reluctant. Now, if there's a particular boards that, that Commissioner Myers, you may be, be referencing, you know, I guess, before I were ever to vote on that, I'd like to know, because, you know, if you look at Aging Services or, or Parks, those boards, for me, have been, I don't know other fellow commissioners' positions, sometimes hard to fill, and I've had to refill them again when I've appointed somebody because they didn't show up. So, so, you know, I would be really reluctant to support just a carte blanche, all-out term limits on, on cert, on all boards, just because of the fact that I want to make sure that, one, we don't remove competent people, we're the elected officials, and if we don't want to appoint somebody, we don't. We have the opportunity to, to change or reappoint every one, two to three years. So my only big issue was just the fact that, I think we, that's a totally different conversation, what we discussed, like Hart, for example, if I, I'm running again in a couple of years, and I never got a chance to appoint somebody, that's something I take a big issue with. But, but right now, I probably wouldn't support any type of, of just term limits on, across the board, just because there may be some, I know I have a few that I, I wouldn't want to remove, and they've been serving, because they understand Parks, they understand Aging Services and things like that, and I don't know how easy it would be to fill them up. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
I think it's, it's pretty much been said, but the diversity of these boards that are, it's just an incredible breadth to them with a lot of people. And I also, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Myers, but I also think this has to be done with a scalpel, rather than wholesale, with some knowledge of the boards and, and the conditions. Several of these boards are statutory, and it's in the statutes, how long their terms are, and so that's, that's an issue. We have, I agree, a plethora of boards, and there may be some boards that we could look at and review, and maybe they are no longer necessary, in particular when members don't show up or don't have a mission any longer that, you know, has passed through its time. But I also see that we do have many boards, that it is, as I understand, pretty difficult to get people to volunteer for. It's a lot of their volunteer time and energy and caring, and they bring to it, and, and the Parks Board's been mentioned several times, I was in the same position, actually, and, you know, I, I vetted the person who was there already, talked to them, they were interested in continuing. I asked other people about, you know, their service and how it contributed, and heard all wonderful recommendations. That's, that's just, you know, a personal appointee on that board. Some of them are appointees that we all do. You know, there's just such a huge number of boards that come through different ways, and I'm not sure exactly what boards you're referring to, but I do, I, I hear you, but I, I would really think we would have to do something that would be very limited in looking and, and considering how we move forward with this.
I have a couple of comments before Commissioner Myers closes. First of all, I'll say this is an excellent discussion. I'll start with Commissioner Walstall's comments. I agree, there are many challenges with a lot of these boards and, and councils, we need to take a hard look at them. We've had that discussion before. I think we may have tightened it up a little bit, but clearly we didn't go far enough in the past, so I totally agree with taking a hard look at that. I also agree with, well, first of all, let me say, I share Commissioner Myers' concerns for fully support, broadening the net, giving opportunity to as many folks as possible, but at the same time, I think Commissioner Cohen really said it best, in that it needs to be a case-by-case basis. I'm just going to use Sports Authority as an example. We have two members, they're in their first term, but we have two members that have been on a number of terms, and I'll tell you, their, their institutional history and knowledge is priceless. And I'm not just saying that because they're friends of mine, but they have that knowledge that predates when I was on the board, and, and I would not want to replace that knowledge, because you simply couldn't replace it. You just couldn't do it. So I support taking a look at these boards and, and moving toward a term limits for certain boards, but I do think it needs to be in an individual basis or case-by-case basis. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to defer and ask if the County Attorney's Office can bring back the boards that this body appoints, so that we can see all of the information, and then make a decision at that time. Is that, that will give us all of the information that we're discussing, okay? That's my...
Again, a motion by Commissioner Myers.
Point of order, just for clarification, just when you say the boards we appoint, you don't mean, you mean the boards we appoint as a group?
Yes.
Instead of individually?
Or the counties, not the ones the state has control over, the ones that we only can appoint. Am I correct, County Attorney's Office?
I, I think it is, it's very helpful for you to clarify, but the way I'm understanding it is that we would simply bring back a full list for you to have, and that could probably be not as an agenda item, just provide it to you, and show you every single board that's out there that is not controlled by state law.
Point of order, I think what Commissioner Kemp was alluding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you were talking about the individual appointments that are not voted on by the board. Why should we drown ourselves in that? Are you, is that what you meant?
Well, that's what I, I was trying to just understand exactly what the reference was, but yes, that would be one of, one of the, you know, things, unless, unless with some of those boards are, might be some, and I don't know, I'm not saying, but there might be some review, too, of those boards, maybe they're no longer significant, but yes, I was saying, I, I, I thought she was saying ones that were not, that, that would automatically take off any boards that were not personally appointees.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was essentially every board, with the exception of those that are, are created by the state. I mean, is that clean?
Yes.
Is that acceptable? Mary Helen, you, I mean, so your Port Authorities, your Sports Authorities, your Aviation Authorities, they would not be included?
Correct. Correct. That's my understanding of the motion.
But your Parks Board, your Animal Serv-, you know, those boards would, would be, as an example. So I think we're...
Can I?
Sure.
Just one question I have, because it, this did actually confuse me, because I think the, like, Planning Commission is statutory, Hart is statutory, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm sure there's others. I don't know if the Sports Authority is statutory or not, I think it might be.
It's a special act.
Yeah, so that's, that's where I was, and the, maybe the, you know, some of the others are, too. I just don't, I don't know, but that's what, that's where the confusion was coming in, in my thought about it.
Well, can you separate those out?
Yes.
Just do that.
Yeah, we can provide the information, but separate them out so that it's clear which ones are covered by state law, and which ones can, you can control locally.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, you go with that?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Walstall. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. B3?
Thank you. The next item is Item B3. This is to adopt the proposed 2024 Hillsborough County State Legislative Program, and Cameron Pennant with Government Relations and Strategic Services is here. Brandon Wagner is available as well with any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, County Staff, members of the public. For the record, Cameron Pennant, Director of Government Relations for Hillsborough County. I am honored today to present to you the draft 2024 Hillsborough County Legislative Agenda. This is, are we able to pull it on the screen? Perfect. So this is the draft legislative agenda that was compiled by County Staff, County Directors, and then, I believe, some of you County Commissioners as well, had requests. It is broken up into two sections, and that is the first section, the appropriation side, and then on the next page, we should be able to go to the policy side, but so much as the board would like to review and edit, or, and approve the agenda, I stand ready.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Owen?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that kind of caught me off guard, that was so fast. We're, we're discussing the, the legislative agenda that's going to be, okay, I just want to make sure that was really quick.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. And thank you all for working on this and, and working with me on quite a few things. In, in this process, I mean, if, if we disagree with some of these, we can kind of move to, I, I say move to strike because I'm a lawyer, move to strike certain ones, correct? And, and I do, there, there are a few of these that I, I think really set us up to fail in Tallahassee, and I'll, you know, everybody knows I got a lot of friends up there in Tallahassee and work closely with them, and, you know, one of the things that I've tried to do as a new commissioner is try to really repair and fix and help us have a really good relationship with Tallahassee. As you all know better than me, money flows from the federal government to the state and then to us, and I think it's important whether or not there's a supermajority of Democrats, a Democrat governor, Republican governor, that whoever it is, we develop a good working relationship with them, and quite frankly, we have not had that. That's just the fact. And, and I feel like, Commissioner Kemp, I'm going to be hard on some, some of your things here, but I just think what it does is it really puts us in a, in a tough spot up in Tallahassee, and puts you all in a tough spot, when we're clearly requesting things that the overwhelming majority and the governor would be against. And, for example, the first one, the merger of the Hillsborough TPO, you know, that's going to happen. It's something that is, is going to happen, and I just don't see the value of sending our folks up to Tallahassee to lobby against what Tallahassee, and I think the majority of this board wants. I understand the arguments, pro and con, Commissioner, I know Commissioner Kemp, we've gone back and forth on it on TPO, Commissioner Cohen, but I just think that that, that one should be stricken, because it's, it's going to happen, and, and I think that, you know, I always use Commissioner Cohen's thing, we are either at the dinner table or we're dinner. And, and so that one, I would, I would like to strike. The, the energy, the energy request, support the 347 million Energy Savings Program funding vetoed by the governor, I think that speaks, speaks a lot for itself, so we're going to send our folks up there to lobby and work on behalf of something that the governor has already vetoed. To me, that just does, does not make, does not make sense. The, the other one is, is a really tough one, it's a new one. It's, it's, it's the legal portion where it says, oppose any consolidation of the Circuit Court over Hillsborough County, given a Florida Supreme Court Committee review of court consolidation. I would actually be interested just to listen to some other commissioners' position on that, because, again, I think it's something that Tallahassee is really going to drive, and I just, again, falling back on, I just don't like sending our lobbyists up there to fail, and for them to get put in a box like they have been the last five to six years, that, you know, Hillsborough County is anti-Tallahassee, and that really is the sentiment up there, I can tell you that. So I, I'd like to strike the, the two that I said to strike on the energy and the, the merger of the TPO, but I would like to hear on the legal, I would like to hear the board's position on the consolidation, because I, I really don't know our, what's at our pleasure on that one. So that's all I have. Thanks.
I thank you for calling, Commissioner Walstall. I guess the best way to handle this is just to identify any that there are issues with, and then we can approve the ones that we're in agreement with, and then we'll individually take up, take up those, if that's okay. Commissioner Walstall?
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, I just need you to entertain me, and I really do, I just, I need you, your insight on the, the fertilizer. I haven't read SB 2500. Can you just, I'm very sensitive to any more government over farmers, they've been regulated to bankruptcy, so what is it?
If you, you know what, if you, I'll, I'll speak to it when I'm in the queue, if that's all right.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll wait to address that one.
I'll be happy to talk about that.
Thank you. I will say that I'm going to be supportive of, of the majority, I mean, it just, I do agree 100% with Commissioner Owen. The best way to continue to get dollars vetoed and appropriated out of Hillsborough County is to continue intentionally spite a supermajority in the state, as well as a veto power governor. I just, I don't understand the motivation behind it. It's like intentionally shooting ourselves in the foot, so I hope that we come... So I hope that we come to agreement to, to move beyond that and, and work towards progressing goals that will pass and get help from everyone. There is going to be one item that I will be at least personally lobbying all of the State House, Hillsborough State House delegation for, which actually would kind of be impeding home role authority. I do believe that we need to have the most close access and representation, like things over the Live Local Act, which I think is going to be fixed now. But I have discovered that there are, there is one law in place in the state of Florida that local commissioners were able to sneak in and had the authority to tax their residents without their residents' permission. I think that that's fundamentally wrong. I think that that is directly taxation without representation. So that one thing, no matter what we pass, I just, I want to be transparent that I will be lobbying for the state to correct that injustice, as many people like to use that word. But the rest of them, I'll just hear what everybody else has to say.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And I'd just like to respond to a few things, Commissioner Owen. And in terms of the TPO, and I understand where you're, you're coming from, I've studied this a great deal, I'm not convinced that a merger happens, no matter what, but I am convinced that the merger would cost more than we pay now, would give up some local control, and would not result in better transportation planning. But right now, there is an ongoing study, and if board members haven't reached any consensus on this, I can definitely, if I can, just rephrase this, pause, make a substitute motion for the staff simply to monitor the legislation related to the Hillsborough TPO.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I wouldn't have no objection to monitoring it unless another board member does, so.
Commissioner Kemp, do you have any other comments?
Yes. And then with regards as also to the energy, I just wanted to explain, it probably could have been worded better, but I've done a lot of looking and researching this. And this funding that was given by the federal government was accepted by 46 states. That's what people were talking about when they came in here and asked us to accept it. It was accepted by 46 states, turned away just by Florida, Iowa, Kentucky, and South Dakota. And as I understand, we have other opportunities to get this. The legislature in whole actually supported this, and it was vetoed by the governor. But I think the legislature should give it another shot, and we would be on their side there. And this is $347 million in federal funding that was given under the Inflation Reduction Act. And when I looked it up and looked at it, it was home energy efficiency rebates for Florida residents, for people to get energy efficient air conditioning, refrigerators, appliances, changes to their homes, low income residents, and that was for, our legislature did send it to the governors, accepting it, and the governor, we can keep going on this for another few years. And I'd just like for us to express our support for accepting, and this probably is a better way of wording it, but this would be my, my change, support accepting $347 million in federal funding under the Inflation Reduction Act for home energy efficiency rebates for Florida residents. Yes, I have one more. Actually, I will let, I'll defer to Commissioner Cohen on, on the courts, because I know you have a lot of expertise and information about that, but I was also interested in having, in going forward with that. And I know both of us were at the hearing the other day, one of two hearings in the state that took place here in Hillsborough County, and we heard at least two hours of testimony in which both Commissioner Cohen and I participated. And it was from all over the state, some virtually, and virtually every single person that spoke, including our chief judge, is supporting or is opposing the consolidation. But I'll, I know Commissioner Cohen's next in the queue.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. So let me go through the four items that, that I noted, and, and thank you, everyone, for really considered remarks on this. And, and I understand, Commissioner Owen, exactly the point that you were trying to make, and I, I think it was well, well taken. I think that Commissioner Kemp's change to the MPO language is a good change. The fact is, the MPO board voted to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Pinellas and Pasco Counties to discuss a merger. So I think for us to take a position against it at this point would, would really contradict the action of our own TPO board, which was to remain open to this, recognizing the reality that it is, I, I don't know that, that I would go as far as to say it's definitely going to happen, but it certainly appears likely to happen. I would, if I were a betting person, I would think more likely than not. And, you know, I do think that if that's the case, being part of the process and not just being resistant to it is in our best interest. But I, it sounds like we're, we're probably all of a mind to, to just monitor that. I, I think also, originally, I think Commissioner Kemp's on the energy thing, I think the language was way unnecessarily provocative, and I think the way that she's rephrased it puts us in line with what I actually think was what the legislature wanted, which was to, to take that money. So I would tend to agree that if we changed the language and not make it adversarial to the government's action, but rather aligned with what the legislature has expressed as their interest, that that might be a, a good way of saying it. On the, the issue of the consolidation, I am not aware of any stakeholder in Hillsborough County that actually thinks this is a good idea. We are very, very fortunate here to have our own circuit in Hillsborough County. The 13th Judicial Circuit's borders are just us. In most of the other circuits, you have multiple counties that are within the circuits. And my experience over the years, particularly at the clerk's office, was that where you have multi-county circuits, you have additional expenses. You have courthouse facilities that have to be strewn out in, in different directions. You have clerk's offices that, that are, you have a judicial that maybe has multiple clerk's offices to deal with, so they, they might have multiple case management systems to deal with. We have a lot of efficiencies built into our system because we have one set of officials that are in charge of everything. In addition, under Article Five, the responsibility for court funding shifted away from the counties to the state back about 15 or 20 years ago. But Hillsborough has continued to fund facilities and technology as we're required to for our court system, but we've also funded above and beyond our responsibilities because we're proud of our court system. We, we, we own it, and we, we want them to have state-of-the-art buildings and technology and, you know, a good, well-paid compensated staff to do the work. And so what has been the case in Hillsborough is that there's been a very, very good working relationship between all of our stakeholders. We take it for granted here because we don't know of any other way, but that is not the way it is in a lot of these, these other circuits, and it's particularly acute where you have multiple counties in the circuit. So I think that, that what we have here works really, really well, and I don't think that we should be fearful of taking a position against the consolidation, because quite frankly, all of the other, I mean, the chief judge sent us all a letter which, in which he expressed himself, I think, very clearly. Certainly, the public defender spoke the other day at the meeting. And, you know, just my own survey of, of the judges, I haven't found anybody in our circuit that actually says they are for this. And so for that reason, I really do think we should add our voice. We put our money where our mouth is. We fund our court system in this county, we should be proud of that, but we ought to, we ought to continue, I think, to advocate for staying in control of it and not have to share it with, with other counties. On the fertilizer ordinance, so in, in 2012 or 2013, the Tampa City Council passed this ordinance. It took the county commission until about 2021 or 2022 to pass it. And what it does is it restricts the use of certain types of high phosphate fertilizers by non-professionals during the rainy season. Essentially, it is out there to protect the public water supply from individuals that will buy fertilizers that they don't know how to apply to their lawn. They put it on their lawn and it ends up all running off into the bay. It doesn't really work unless all the jurisdictions have the same law, because there's a lot of different jurisdictions that their water flows right into Tampa Bay. And we finally got to the point where we now have this ordinance throughout, throughout the bay. At the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, we have been seeing very alarming statistics on the death of the seagrasses in our bay. There are a lot of reasons that are given for it, but certainly the water quality as it relates to what is actually flowing in through the stormwater system is a problem. And the Piney Point thing was a problem, the various red, red tide and algae outbreaks have been a problem. But the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council was extremely enthusiastic about the fact that all of the jurisdictions had finally passed an ordinance to at least get some control. And by the way, these things aren't, they're not banned, no one is, is, is coming looking for them. You just can't purchase them during the rainy season within the jurisdiction. They're, they're just taken off the shelves, and you can purchase, purchase other products. But there are certain products that, that are so dangerous to the water supply that they get taken off. The legislature last year passed a mor, a, a one-year moratorium on any additional jurisdictions passing this type of, this type of restriction. I am not schooled enough on the ways of Tallahassee to know what industry groups or interest groups were behind that, but they did pass this one-year moratorium with the idea of studying whether or not to get rid of all these ordinances entirely. And I think that, given the city of Tampa's experience with having had this in place now for over a decade, given the fact that we finally got it done here in Hillsborough County, and given the fact that we have a serious problem with seagrasses dying in Tampa Bay, that it makes sense for us to want to keep this ordinance on the books. So that's why I think that we should lend our voice to this. This is something that they are going to be discussing this year. They are going to make a decision whether or not to put a stop to these ordinances or whether or not to allow them to continue. So that's, that's why I added it to the list.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I'll, I'll just follow up a little bit on the court consolidation. And I do want to say, the room was absolutely packed, but a lot of people appeared virtually. And I think the number one category, you might agree, that I saw of any public officials around the state, that they went to county after county commenting on how, how strongly, very strongly they were opposed to it, were sheriffs, that the sheriffs from county after county after county said the, how, what impacts it would have, that would be terrible impacts for their court system. And here especially, and these were all, these were all over, but consolidation really does not make sense. Hillsborough County has had its own Circuit Court since 1934, and as we know, has grown astronomically in population since that time to over 1.5 million. Pinellas and Pasco County are the Sixth Circuit with a combined population, that's about the same as Hillsborough County. And then we have three less populated counties of Manatee, Sarasota, and De Soto in the 12th Circuit, and that has only 860,000 people there. And I can't imagine a consolidation of counties into circuits that would make more sense in terms of location and population than what we have right now, also with the, the fact that we support our court, and I wondered about that on a greater extent than we're required to by the state. Consolidating distant courts would be less effective, and there was a lot of issues about victims' rights and how this would affect, affect them and their services, is, and would create a less effective and efficient system. Access to courts would be compromised by combining circuits and taking the courts further from the people and the people of Hillsborough County who need them.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, so we have a, we have a very large county, and I also believe that we should have our own court system for some of the same reasons that's already been mentioned here, and that we should not consolidate with others.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wollstall, then Commissioner Owen, and then I'm, I'm just going to suggest, when appropriate, if we go ahead and vote on the appropriation request, and then vote on the policy request, other than the four that have been identified, and then we can take those up individually. So, Commissioner Wollstall?
I, Commissioner Cohen, I, I want to support you, but I, I also equally want input from the ag community, especially since we, our AEDC, if you've never met them, these are some of the biggest farmers in the entire state that we have the privilege of having the knowledge base and voice of. I wouldn't want, I, I do agree with you that some of these really strong fertilizers, when they were introduced in the 50s after World War II, I mean, it, it created a, a problem, and, and I agree. My concern is I don't want to do something that would unintentionally hurt them. Maybe they were like, hey, Josh, what you just did is, you killed that from my local supply shop when I needed it. I, so for that one, I just, unless I, can we, if, if that one wasn't done today, it can be added on, though, if we reach out to them and say, hey, do you have a problem with us taking a position on this? They can add it.
That, that is actually exactly what Brandon just mentioned, is that this agenda can be amended. The legislative session doesn't start until March.
If you would be willing to at least reach out, they can give us 30 days. That's all I'm asking for.
Absolutely. I think they're actually exempt, but I'm hap, we'll, we'll get the, the information on who's exempt and who's covered. You can reach out to them, and, and we, we can absolutely do that.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve all the policy requests, with exception, that we'll discuss these right afterwards, with exception to the merger of the Hillsborough TPO, the 347 million energy savings program, the consolidation of the courts, and the further changes to Senate Bill 2500.
Okay, so we have a motion for the remainder of the policy request, with the exception of the four that were just identified.
And as well, the appropriations request.
You want to do that, you want to do that one separate or include the appropriations as well?
Well, but, Mr. Chair, what do you think?
Let's, let's do that one sec, separate, because I want to make a comment on that one as well. So let's just do the policy request right now. So the motion, Commissioner Owen, and the second was Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, so Commissioner Owen, you want to, you were the first one that identified those, at least those first three.
Sure, so I guess we'll just take them one at a time, does that make sense, and vote on them?
Yeah.
So it, it, I mean, the word monitor added to the merger of the Hillsborough TPO, I mean, I think we should do that anyways. One of the words of oppose and support, I'll just tell you all, in Tallahassee, that makes a big difference, of them even getting in a room with a senator or a state representative. So when we put those words, support and oppose, it can have everything to do with them not even be able to create a dialogue. So that's the only reason that I think it's a, you know, a, a bit of a nerve-wracking thing for us to take that strong position, not saying there's not some things we need to take a strong position. Listen, I'm not saying we should be afraid of Tallahassee, I'm just saying we should do what we can to try to work with them and give, give these gentlemen an opportunity to get in the room with them. So, so I'm okay, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to change the word to monitor and strike oppose on that particular one.
Gives a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. Any comments on that motion? Commissioner Kemp, you want to speak to that one?
No, I just wanted to make that motion, but it's done, sir.
All right, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Next.
And, and then I, I will still move to, I appreciate you all working on this with us, but I still think that the energy one is just a dangerous one up in Tallahassee for our, for our lobbyists to go up there and lobby for. So I'm going to move to strike the energy support of the $347 million energy savings.
Second.
So motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostol. Any comments on the motion? Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I actually like to make a substitute motion. And again, I explain, I explained this, the legislature did support this. It is important, we've had lots of citizens come in and ask about it, and that's what kind of reminded me about it, and to know that there is 347 million out there in federal funding, which could be submitted by the legislature. Again, it won't necessarily get the same treatment. But my motion, my substitute motion is to support accepting $347 million in federal funding under the Inflation Reduction Act for home energy efficiency rebates for Florida residents.
Second.
Okay, substitute motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Wostol?
This is, I'm the biggest Tesla fan on the whole planet, but I'm going to be bringing a future item in terms of this green energy movement, and something I've talked to the county administrator about, where there is one of the biggest humanitarian crises on the planet going on in Africa, where they are using babies and men to artisanally mine the cobalt that's used for most of this technology. And I absolutely and fundamentally oppose the use of taxpayer funds to promote this humanitarian crisis that's going on in Africa. So those are the reasons that I'm opposing the use of these funds. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
Well, again, I'd just like to say, this isn't for cars. This is for energy-efficient appliances that we all have in our homes now, including air conditioning, including things like refrigerators. I read an article about a man who had his air conditioning for 23 years that was about to go down, and he called to find out about this program because he heard about it in other places. The funding was accepted by 46 other states, and, and it was passed by our legislature to accept it, to turn our back on 347 million in energy efficiencies for homes and people to do appliances in homes, I think would, I think we need to support that, and hopefully it will be, it will be something that the governor would also be supporting at this time.
Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. While I'm all for wrapping this up, I'm not going to allow the misinformation to stay, and I'm not going to get into the scientific nature of it. The diodes that are used for the battery technology that goes into the use of the solar panels, all of that will be addressed for me at a later date. So it does promote some good uses, but it also does promote an ongoing humanitarian crisis, and I cannot be supportive of it. Thank you.
All right, substitute motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on the substitute motion to support the energy savings program.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Hagan, Owen, and Wostol voted no.
All right, next.
Would we have to hear my motion to strike it technically? Or? I think so, yeah.
For the motion to strike or remove?
The energy.
The energy proposal by, by Commissioner Owen. Second, right, Commissioner Wostol. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
And now dealing with the legal, dealing with the court consolidation, you know, it kind of feels partisan to me, the issue. No one knows the 13th Judicial Circuit like me. I've practiced my whole life there. It's the best circuit in the state of Florida, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to judges. And, you know, I, I do want to say that, you know, for a lot of this, I understand there's a lot of self-preservation in it when you're talking about judges and constitutionals, which again, we, we have great ones here. And, and my fear is that this is going to become a super partisan issue up in Tallahassee. I don't know how appropriate it is for you all to allude to that, Brandon, right now, but, but that, that is kind of my fear. So, you know, I, I would move to, obviously, we need to stay on top of it, but rather than oppose, to put the word monitor in there as well. So that would be my motion on that.
We got a motion by Commissioner Owen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wostol to change the language to monitor any consolidation of the circuit court. Commissioner Cohen?
I just want to say that I'm gonna, hopefully, if this doesn't pass, make a motion to include it, because I really do think it's something, as a one-county circuit, that is really not in our best interest. It is, it, and I, and while it may, it, while it may have some partisan overtones throughout the state, I believe in Hillsborough County, there is virtual unanimity. I'd be astonished if, if we could find somebody who works within the system that actually thinks this is a good idea.
Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Cohen, Hagan, and Kemp voted no.
Okay, can, can you reflect that?
I'm gonna support the court, the court, the circuit court on this one.
She wished to oppose the last vote.
Yes.
Can you adequately reflect that?
We can add to that, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, did you want to make a motion?
So I'd, I'd like to go ahead and, and just make the motion to include the language as it's, as it's stated.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Owen and Wostol voted no.
Okay, and then the last item was that Commissioner?
I'll let Commissioner Wostol and Cohen.
We're gonna defer that, right? And we'll, we'll take that up again once we've gotten some additional information.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the ag community and then we can have that information disseminated and see where they're at, if I can get a letter of support from them or opposition, whatever they feel.
I think it would be helpful just to get the, the text of actually what we have now on the books, so that we can see, you know, what exemptions exist and who it actually applies to.
Okay, so the motion, Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Your mic, your, your mic.
Sorry about that. I'm just gonna ask for some informa, do I need to make a motion to, to bring it back?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to bring it, this item back at our, either our next regular scheduled board meeting or the one after that, to answer basically Commissioner Wostol's questions regarding the agriculture community's position on this, and also to get the text of our own ordinance so that we can see what exemptions apply as it's currently written.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wostol. Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, then if we can have a motion for the appropriations request?
Move approval.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Myers. I just wanted to make one comment, and I'm glad that it was stated that we can amend this legislative program going forward. I know we don't have a whole lot of time before session starts, but I've been working on something for a couple of months with staff regarding a sustainable energy initiative involving carbon capture that provides significant environmental and economic benefits. Now, I know that we just, you know, voted to, you know, to oppose the energy savings program, but I want to just point out that Governor DeSantis actually in May signed an MOU to create a similar-type facility in Polk, and I attended the, the groundbreaking. So I think I have an idea of where, where this is going. But staff's researching the issue. I'm going to bring it back forward for board discussion when there's a little more meat on the bone. Much of the funding comes from state and federal grants, so it would be appropriate to be on a legislative agenda. And again, not sure what the legislature's position will be, but I know that the governor has indicated some support in the past. So just wanted to put that on the record, that sometime in the future, I'll be bringing something forward on that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the appropriations request. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Need to re-announce it? Oh, okay. Yeah, and the clerk wants to just re, we don't have to revote, but just re, re-announce the, the clerk or the court vote. One moment, please.
It's a nice bow tie, Cameron.
Thank you, sirs.
I guess because he works for Brandon, that's a requirement.
Sucking up.
I was wondering if Commissioner Wostol was.
You want to come back to us on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Cameron?
Yes, well, first, I would like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for approval of the 2024 Hillsborough County legislative agenda. Of note, the Florida legislative session does begin on January 9th and should end on March 8th. So, thank you all.
Appreciate your work. Thank you, sir. Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. We can now go to item F1, and this will be your appointments for A, the Hillsborough Transit Authority, HART, and B, the Hillsborough County Planning Commission. Luanne will take you through those two items, F1 and A.
Yeah, Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a point of order or what, but I'm wondering, it, it came very fast, removing these and putting back some. So I'm wondering if we can also include, if anybody has any objections, to the Public Arts Committee being taken up today?
Do you want to make, make that as a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that as a motion.
Okay, to add in the Public Art Committee to today's vote?
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen, any comments on that? Commissioner Wostol?
I just, I'm not going to step on Commissioner Myers' toes anymore on it, so I'm not going to support it for that reason. The only reason I wanted these two is because these are the two really high-business-oriented bodies that we sit on, so that's all.
Can I just add too, there's no voting required on it?
Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I was just gonna say, right, there's only two applicants for two positions, so it, it's almost.
It's just, it's her term limit thing, so.
Point of order, Commissioner Myers, could you comment on that?
Yeah, can we defer this until we get the information to come back to the board on the appointees on boards and councils?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we defer the appointments to the boards and council today until we can get all the information from the county attorney's office.
For the arts committee?
That includes all of them, the ones that we're getting ready to vote on now.
Do we defer them all?
Yes.
Okay, the motions defer, I guess, essentially just one, F1, A, and B, since we already deferred the other ones, by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Any comments, Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, just, I, I won't be supporting that. I think we agree with Commissioner Wostol that we're ready to pick, especially on HART and planning, that we need to do that now, so I won't be supporting that. Thanks.
Commissioner Wostol?
Yeah, we, we already voted to not defer these, so I would support you deferring the arts council, but, but not A and B.
Okay, no other comments, please accord your vote.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that is a point of order. Didn't we already vote on this? So are we voting on the same thing twice?
We're just, we're, we're voting just to, at this point, to defer 1A and 1B only. Please accord your vote.
Commissioner Myers? Motion failed three to four. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Hagan, Owen, and Wostol voted no.
Okay, HART?
Choose three, Commissioner Hagan.
One, three, and four?
Commissioner Myers?
Two, four, and, and three.
Two, three, and, I didn't hear your third one.
Four.
Four. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Three, four, five.
Commissioner Cohen?
Two, four, five.
Commissioner Owen?
Two, four, five.
Commissioner Kemp?
Two and four. Two, three, and four.
Commissioner Wostol?
Three, four, five.
It will be Marvin Knight, John King, and we have a tie between Gary Hartfield and Steve Polson. We need to take a second vote on that. Commissioner Hagan?
Five.
Commissioner Myers?
Two.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda? Either two or five.
Five.
Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Owen?
Two.
Commissioner Kemp?
Two.
Commissioner Wostol?
Five.
Five.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, well, point of order, we, I have to make a motion for Mr. Hartfield because he serves on Career Source, and because it's two boards, we have to also approve him, my understanding correct, Luanne?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to approve Mr. Hartfield serving on two boards.
Motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. No comments on the motion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Wostol voted no.
Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, Commissioner Hagan, please choose two.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Myers?
Nine, nine, eight and nine.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Six and eight.
Commissioner Cohen?
Seven and eight.
Commissioner Owen?
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Kemp?
Eight and nine.
Commissioner Wostol?
Seven and nine.
It will be Joseph Nigel with five votes, and we have a tie between Steve Kona and Paula Horas. Please choose one, Commissioner Hagan?
Seven.
Commissioner Myers?
Eight.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Seven.
Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Owen?
Seven.
Commissioner Kemp?
Eight.
And Commissioner Wostol?
Seven.
So it will be Steve Kona.
All right, can we have a motion to confirm?
Move a second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Wostol to confirm. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. F2?
Thank you. F2 is Commissioner Owen's item regarding the flying of the Israeli flag.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it goes without saying what's been going on with our, arguably, our greatest allies over on the other side of the world. I want to first start off by saying this is not about religion. I'm a Christian, even though we share the same God, this is not about that. This is about terrorism, this is about inflicting ungodly imaginable, unimaginable things on, like I said, one of our greatest allies. I've been saddened just to see locally a lot of the protests, which is people's right. It's their right to do, it's their right to protest peacefully. But it doesn't mean that us as a board, or us as a county, as a state, or as a nation can't point it out as corrupt and wrong. And that's what I think that, I, I think that it's important. And that's what I think that—I—I think that it's important for us as a county commission to show our solidarity for the—for the Israeli people and our Jewish friends here at home. You know, this antisemitism, I'll—I'll never really understand it. It's a hard thing for me to grasp, but it's something that—that we've seen right outside our front door here recently. This is—this is a bipartisan issue, too. This is not anything that I—I think is partisan. I—I'll quote our—you know, everyone knows I'm not a big fan of this presidential administration, but—but I'll—I'll quote our our Secretary of State, Tony Blinken. He said, "It's hard to find the right words. It's beyond what anyone would ever want to imagine, much less, much less, God forbid, experience." He went on to say, "A baby, an infant riddled with bullets, soldiers beheaded, young people buried alive." He said, "It's simply depravity in the worst imaginable way. They have used civilians as human shields and have purposely put innocents in areas targeted for Israeli operations." Finally, he said that the United States will always be there for Israel as it continues to grapple with the attacks by Hamas terrorists. Again, this is not something that is about religion, it's not something really that's about two—two countries that may oppose each other. This is about supporting Israel and supporting our local Jewish community. So, at this time, I move to approve the flying of the national flag of the state of Israel in respect of the victims of the tragedy in Israel and as a show of solidarity with Israel. The Israeli flag will be flown in front of the county center Wednesday, October 25th through Friday, October 27th. The raising and lowering times shall occur during normal business hours. And I also want to add too, if there's any, you know, fear or trepidation of, you know, security, I completely trust our sheriff and these deputies that are here today to protect us. Our nation was founded on standing up to bullies, standing up to—to tyrants, and we still, as a nation to this day, stand up to bullies and terrorists. And—and—and I would just say, if there's any fear or trepidation of of approving this based on-on-on fear of of security or what can happen, gosh, I'd say that, you know, you're—you're on the wrong dais. We, as a government, especially on the federal level, we just sent, you know, people over there, our sailors over there, and Commissioner Wostel can probably allude to that some. But that's my motion, the purpose of my motion, again, it's not based on any religion, any turmoil between two different countries, but an attack or or terrorism upon our greatest ally and—and the antisemitism in our local community. So, that's my motion. Thank you.
Taking a motion by Commissioner Owen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wostel, or Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. Yeah, I received many requests, even some from Republicans, for me to do something, get involved, don't let them—don't let the anti-Israel protests happen, and I politely declined and reminded them that that was actually exactly what I fought for. The important thing about freedom of speech is, not only do people get to have their own opinions outside of government's control, is they also get to let you know who they are. And if they are those that would support the violence that has occurred from radical Islamic jihadists that have it in their charter to decimate and annihilate one culture simply because they disagree with them on certain issues, then I say that you don't bend a knee. You allow them to speak so that you know who they are, and then that you fly a flag in their face, and you remind them that we do not bend a knee to violence, we do not bend a knee to bullies, rather that we stand strongly and solidarily with our Jewish community, and I commend this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to support the motion, and we can stand in solidarity of this without flying the flag. We know last week our governor was here in Tampa at the airport, and he just had the flag up while he was speaking. Once he finished speaking, the flag came down. Most of us did not work in this building during 9/11. I know Chris—County Attorney Christine Beck, I was working here during 9/11, and to be an employee at that time, it was fear. Even in our county center, we'll not check when we come in like if you go over to the courthouse and you go through the little, whatever you want to call it, to make sure you don't have a gun or anything else on you. We don't have to invite someone to attack one of our county buildings. Sure, the flag will be flown here if we vote for that here at county center, but think about our staff being at another site. I know what it was like on 9/11. Took us about two hours just to come in, if you were reporting in at 8:00. Each one of us had to be screened to come into county center in any other building. Sure, we have a wall going on, but we don't have to—there's other ways, Commissioner Owen, that this can be displayed. If you want to have a press release right after this board meeting, take the flag, go downstairs to multipurpose room, share your comments, but let's just not consider all of our employees. You know, the focus might be, yes, the flag is here at county center, but we have our employees at various other sites as well, and we know the protests are going on on both sides. So, think about the community as a whole. We had it Friday when we had to leave the building. We had this, we're at City Hall, then they marched over here to George Chalour Park, then they had something at—out of Temple Terrace. And so, it's just not a—a—a good fit for our county right now. I do support, we can be in solidarity, and it's not about the religion at this time, in my honest opinion, but think about the employees, think about those who would cross the street, coming from the—the garage to come here, the public coming into one of our buildings, what could happen? Okay? And I'll leave my comments there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. The events that have occurred over the past week, coincidentally or not coincidentally, on the 50th anniversary of the Yom Kippur War, mark what, at least for me, in my view, has been one of the saddest and most devastating events in—in both, I think, the history of the Jewish people and also the history of the state of Israel. I—I want to be very clear that I—I think this was a deliberate, unprovoked terrorist attack by Hamas, which is a terrorist organization, on innocent civilians that resulted in the deaths of over 1,000 Israelis, and there are now 200 hostages, as we speak, being held in God knows what type of conditions in Gaza. In the words, I think, also of our Secretary of State, "Israel has a right and a duty to defend itself," and I think that it is appropriate for the United States to stand with them in this fight. And—and I—I believe that the—the flying of this flag for three days is an appropriate show of solidarity, and for that reason, I'm going to support the motion. I do want to make it very clear that—that in saying that, I am not indifferent or not aware of the suffering of the Palestinian people in Gaza. They are also victims of Hamas, the terrorist organization which has run Gaza for the last 15 years. Imagine if we, as a government, took the money that taxpayers give us, and instead of using it to provide services to our citizens, we used it to build tunnel networks to bomb Polk County. It is—it is just an appalling dereliction of responsibility, what has gone on there, and the only way that we are going to see anything resembling a two-state solution or peace in the Middle East is for Hamas to be defeated and destroyed. And so, I do think that it is appropriate at this moment that we stand with Israel. I—I understand and recognize and and appreciate what Commissioner Myers is saying. I think that it is a very, very fraught time, and it—it is appropriate for people to take all of what's going on very seriously and recognize that we can have threats in our own community as well. But I also think there is a time and a place for making a moral stand, and the killing of civilians in the way that they were killed last week in Israel, in my view, really does demand a response by all of us, and for that reason, I'm in support of the motion.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and that's so well said, Commissioner Cohen, thank you for those comments. You know, I'll just also add to it that places that are already flying the Israeli flag is Hartford, Connecticut, North Andover, Massachusetts, Fresno, California, Olympia, Washington, Lower Gwinnett Township, Pennsylvania, Buffalo, New York, UK government buildings, EU headquarters in Brussels. So, you know, while I understand it's—it—it can be easy to live in a spirit of fear, you can let the bad guys very easily get to you, it's a—it's a very easy thing to do, and I—I—I don't want to discount that. All I will say is that—that's just not who we are as Americans, that we are going to take stands whenever terrorists inflict pain on us, foreign and domestically, or arguably our greatest allies. So, I—I think that this will show a lot to our local Jewish community, that we stand with them, we will continue to stand with our local Jewish community and with Israel. Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes, so we—we cannot be controlled, you know, if we allow that fear, you're allowing people to control, you know, your freedom of thought, your freedom of speech. So, we need to stand and call evil evil and not call evil good, and so we have to stand with them, and this is very important because we don't want to allow this to continue and become more and more in our country, in our—in our nation, or even around the world. And I—I agree also with Commissioner Cohen that for the Palestinian people also, not only, you know, we stand for—for Israel, but we know that the Palestinians have suffered also because of Hamas, and we should pray for all those people that have been affected by terrorism and affected by war.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Myers voted no.
All right. Next item?
And the next item is item F3. This is Commissioner Wostel's item regarding changes to the board policy regarding—the One Arm Waste Water Department.
Commissioner Wostel?
Should be a pretty straightforward one, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking to streamline, I've been digging through the waterfall of policies that are in place here in Hillsborough County. There's one that, a different one, that I could have amended it to, but it was more of a technical policy that's in place. This is one is more about improving the fiscal responsibility of how we implement growth and the costs of water improvements and increase—increases of capacity. So, we've already have taxpayer-funded land, the cost of land in Hillsborough County is immeasurably high, I don't think that anybody could have ever predicted this, so we need to make sure that we equip our water department with all the tools it needs to streamline the process to lay pipe for improved access to clean water for our citizens.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Wostel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. No board comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
G2?
G2. This is a receiver report regarding the parental choice options for minor access to the library collections, and Andrew Bradenbaugh will present this item. This was a future-issue item by Commissioner Owen.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Andrew Bradenbaugh, Director of Library Services. I just want to start by saying that the library and the Public Library Board strongly support a parent's right to choose the reading material for their children, but we realize that that comes with great responsibility as well, and we are very pleased this morning to bring forward our future course of action to provide some tools to parents in handling that responsibility. The—over the last few months, since this was brought forward in May, we've spent some time working with our Public Library Board and working with the system administrators of our integrated library system, which I think would be probably, it's a convoluted way of saying, our library catalog system. And really had a lot of discussions in the public eye about this issue and about what it would take to implement this and how other libraries handle it, and have come up with what we believe is—is really an expansion on existing limitations that we have based on R-rated DVDs and internet access in order to provide parents with some additional selections when they sign their child up for a library card that helps shape what's available to them through library borrowing. So, what we're—what we're planning on moving forward with is seven new library card types. So, when parents sign up, they'll have the option to add or subtract materials that their children have access to. For children between 0 and 12, there'll be some options for a default card, which is that what every child 0 and 12 will get by default, and that has access to all the materials that are dedicated toward and recommended for children in our library's collection. Usually, when you're in the library, if you're in a larger library, there's a separate children's area in a glassed-in room, that's the materials we're talking about. So, that's what will be by default available to juvenile borrowers. Now, a parent can, if they believe their children want or need access or are mature enough, opt for an additional set of requirement—or additional set of materials, and that would be a plus, a juvenile plus card, which would allow general nonfiction and classics. So, when you get to a—a higher age level in that earlier borrowing age, you may need some of these tools to do your schoolwork or your school homework, so parents can opt into that and allow that. Additionally, parents, if they're inclined to have their child have access to everything, they have the option to remain giving their child access to absolutely everything in the library by selecting a juvenile unrestricted card. We, at the moment, put some perspective on this before I start talking about the teens. There are about 600,000 active library cards in Hillsborough County right now. Children between the ages of 0 and 12 account for about 18,000 of those, so this is a very small number, and we believe that a lot of our parents are already exercising a—a—a wonderful amount of judgment over their own children's reading by using a family card. So, there's a lot of parents who are already doing a great job of—of guiding their kids reading. We're going to do the same thing with teen borrowers, and that's those between 13 and 16. So, by default, those borrowers, by age, would have access to all of the stuff, of course, that's in the juvenile collection, but they would also have the young adult fiction and graphic novels and the general nonfiction and classics that are available in the library. And so, every child that's currently between those ages would, by default, get access to those materials. Parents, this—one of the things about this, and this is really the core collection of material that we're talking about when there's concerns about access and maturity levels. 13 to 16 is not a very wide span of ages, but it is an incredibly wide span of maturity levels among children. And so, this gives parents some very specific options, knowing their own children's maturity level better than anyone else could, of what to add and what to subtract for their children. They—so, they could, if they believe their child needs those homework help materials, but may not be quite mature enough for teen, that young adult fiction, they could restrict that by opting for the restricted card, and just—that would be something that the child would not be able to check out. They could also, if they felt that their child wanted access, again, to those R or non-rated DVDs that we do provide, that's a current option that we have, but that would be added back in with that teen plus. And again, the same way with a child's card, if the parent felt that they wanted their child to have literally access to everything in our collection, they could make the card a teen unrestricted card. And, again, this is about 12,000 borrowers, so it's really a small number of borrowers that we're talking about. One of the things that we had said that we would spend some time doing is taking a look at our ability to implement something like this, and that—that is, since we've put this forward, obviously, a yes. Using combination of borrower types, these new library cards, and the materials types that we've just outlined, we're able to—to create that opt-in, opt-out system. We are able to do this work with our own in-house staff. We have incredible folks working, administering our library catalog system and our classification of materials. It is labor-intensive. It's probably going to take us an entire month to get the work done. It's over 100,000 table changes in this database structure, and it may incur some very minimal overtime charges in order to get that done. So, our next steps— So our next steps is to make those changes, to test the system, and then we want to make some policy updates to make sure this is reflected in our library borrowing policy, changes to our library card application so parents can make these selections at registration, definitely staff training, so our staff are well aware of what options they're showing parents are available to help them, and of course, a very detailed public awareness campaign, emailing all of our customers, working with our social media, working with the county's social media, brochures and flyers, signs in the library, as much as we can do to get the word out. Information's our business, so we should be able to do a pretty good job of that. We do expect to go live just after the first of the year. I didn't want to actually commit to a specific date, only because we're not quite sure what's going to happen in testing. January 1st is our target date, but certainly within the first quarter of the beginning of next year, we feel like, you know, with the holidays and all that coming, that should be a sufficient amount of time for us to get that done. Wanted to be brief because I realize I'm standing between you and lunch. Any questions? Actually, I would respectfully ask for a motion to accept this, the staff report, and I would love to entertain any questions you might have about this.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
And I'll move to accept the report.
Second.
You know, I, if you could, first of all, I just want to say I'm in awe and so impressed with our library services. Every time, I call it a different branch, every time I meet with folks at a different branch, I get more impressed with Hillsborough County. We really do, we have the best county in the state. I'm not just saying it because I'm the county commissioner. You all have been outstanding through this process, and I really love the fact that, you know, we kind of let the library board really do the heavy lifting here, and you, Andrew, as well.
And they did a great job.
And they did a great job. Could you talk real briefly about, I think this was pretty much a unanimous decision by the library board, correct?
Yeah, actually, yeah, completely bypassed them. You know, we had a lot of discussions over months of meetings and bringing back reports to them, and you know, it's, there was a lot of feeling that, you know, we already provide a lot of tools for parents, but coming to the realization of the complexity of our collections, came up with this, working junction with the staff and feel, and supported unanimously at the outset of the whole program.
And what you touch on, I think you all kind of had the same thing that I got the first day this came about, where you had a lot of people showing up, worried about book banning and things like that. Can you just talk about how those meetings, the first meeting versus second and third, how those discussions went?
You know, we had a significant number of folks, and the library, public library board meetings are publicly noticed and conducted in the sunshine, so we do provide detailed agendas and minutes and announcements of where they're located throughout the county. So we had, at our first meeting, and this is about half a dozen citizens, concerned citizens, show up, and many were the same folks that showed up here at the board and were not quite sure exactly what was really happening. And so, you know, again, information's our business. Once facts were presented, that we're not looking at removing materials, we're just providing a few extra tools, whatever you and your child have access to today, you and your child will have access, if that is your choice, when we're done. And that's kind of the goal we strove toward, was to keep the choice in the hands of the parent. And very satisfied with that. I think the public participation was very minimal from there on out.
Yeah.
Other than the reading of the minutes.
Yeah, and that's really the whole point of what this has been from the very beginning, to put parents in the driver's seat, not to be a thing where, you know, I think there were some comments that, hey, you need to watch your kid 24/7, know what they're doing at all time, and that's just not a reality for folks in my district who are working parents. We need to be, as a county, we need to be partners with parents, and you would agree that parents know their kids better than we do as a government, right?
Absolutely. We work with a lot of kids every day, and we do see that the parents really do know their kids best.
Yeah, and so, you know, the options, as you, Andrew, alluded to, that you can even have a juvenile unrestricted. I don't know why you would want to do that, but that would mean that a seven-year-old could access Fifty Shades of Grey, for example, right? If it was unrestricted.
If the parent chose for that level of access.
I would encourage all parents, if they're listening in public, to please take a look at their child's library card once this is implemented, and, but no book leaves the shelf, no opportunity for a parent to say, I want my kid to read The Iliad, for example, a book that I think does have merit, that's an adult section book, does have merit for certain kids. So you can still basically state, yes, I want my kid to have access to that book.
That would be considered a classic. And actually, you brought up something I really should touch on. During implementation, we do intend that all people within those age brackets are, by default, moved into that default category. For a parent to make a change, they would need to visit the library and show identification because they are in their child's record as the legal guardian to make any adjustments.
Great, great. And on the teen side of things, excuse me, young adult would be books like Twilight, correct? Is that safe to say? And then fiction and graphic, those are, I'd say comic books, right?
Those are the larger bound comic books.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're giving parents the opportunity to say, my kid can have access to that stuff as a teen. And again, you know, nobody knows their kid better than their parents, and I just think this is really critical and important, that our library systems provide that opportunity for parents to determine what their kids can and cannot read. So thank you for your work on this. Like I said, I think you guys did an outstanding job, and I couldn't be more impressed with our library services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion to see the report by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Wostel. No other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Great, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Bonnie?
Thank you. And we have one item that, I'm sorry, we have future discussion items, and then we have the one item that was pulled from consent.
Do we have any future issues? Commissioner Owen?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I got to just find it. Could you move, did someone else have one? Could you move on to that? Let me find it.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, and I'll be brief. Thank you. We have had a series of neighborhood meetings, particularly in the town and country area, where there has been a real elevation in concern about people illegally subdividing single-family homes and creating all kinds of rental units outside of the watchful eye of code enforcement and law enforcement. And I really have two questions. One is for the county attorney's office, and the other, I think, is for our land development code staff. And really, what I'm asking for is what additional tools we might be able to add to our existing ordinances to assist code enforcement and also land development coordination in being able to enforce the ordinances that we already have on the books related to these subdividing properties. I know it's been a huge issue in the city of Tampa, I know it's an issue all over the county, as we face difficulties regarding affordable housing, a lot of people maybe taking situations into their own hands, but there's definitely an epidemic, even more so lately, of just wanton disregard for how many units are supposed to be on a given piece of property, and I'd like to know if we can get a report back and see if there's some things we can do to help our folks that are out in the field.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Found it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for staff to bring back a proposal, working with FDOT, to transfer County Road 39, the segment from State Road 60 to Manatee County Line to FDOT. This could include accepting some minor roadway from FDOT by the county. Thank you.
Bonnie, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. And before we do the last item, the clerk, I think, wanted to make an announcement.
Yes, Commissioner. Regarding item B3, for the record, with Commissioner Myers' vote, the motion failed two to five. Commissioners Cameron Sipeda, Cohen, Hagan, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right, thank you. All right, last item?
Last item is item A2. This item was pulled from consent. This is regarding the county's participation in a 140-unit affordable housing elderly rental community in Sefner. Cheryl Howell is here.
Good afternoon. Item A2, Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator of Equity and Community Impact. And the item states, requesting really to approve a state housing initiative partnership program funding agreement for a local government contribution in an amount not to exceed $115,000, a home investment partnership program agreement in an amount not to exceed $4 million, and a HOPE Act local housing funds agreement in an amount not to exceed $2 million between Hillsborough County and Blue St. Francis LTD, to fund construction costs associated with Casa de Francisco, a 140-unit elderly rental apartment community for households with very low, low, and/or moderate income located at 4450 County Road 579, Sefner, in the form of the land use restriction agreement mortgages, promissory notes, to secure affordability and the county's interest for 50 years. Also approve the form of two subordinate agreements to subordinate the county's liens to liens of senior lenders, and authorize the chair to execute these subordinate agreements upon the closing of the financing for the project. Your agreements will be funded with, once again, $115,000 from the ship grant funds, $2 million from HOPE funds, and $4 million from the FY24 home grants, grant funds budget. And just an FYI, this project went through a request for a proposal that was managed through our procurement department.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. I know we call it HOPE, but it's, HOPE is people's property taxes, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So that's why I can't support it. And is this in the urban service area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so can we have a motion?
Of approval.
Motion to approve Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers and Kemp. If no other questions, please record your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Cameron Sipeda, Owen and Wostel voted no.
All right. Bonnie, any other items?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's everything.
All right, we're adjourned.